Welcome, and calling the October 12, 2023 Planning Board to Order. May we have a roll call, please?
Chair LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finity is absent. The Secretary is here. Board members Catalonato.
Present.
Mutu.
Present.
Neely.
Present.
Fulham.
Present.
We have Coram.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under common law indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have some minutes, Gloria?
Three due September 14 and September 28.
September 14 and 28. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Craig, second by Kate, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed extensions, six in favor, one absent. Okay, so...
I'm just gonna do my stuff first.
You want to do yours, Anthony? Okay, so number two, 32 Hill Station Road, Schinickock Hills.
That's actually just going to be an extension of the action deadlines of the pre-application report until November 9, 2023.
Okay, motion?
Motion.
Motion by George, second by Gloria, and all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed extensions, six in favor, one absent. Anthony, number three is off the agenda.
Yep, that's off the agenda.
Okay. Number four, Joseph Greiner Lot 1, 24 Halsey Road.
Sorry about that. The board might remember, this was a request for a covenant amendment. This is 24 Halsey Road, an existing single-family residence. If you look at the aerial, at the time, the subdivision was done 2010, maybe. It created this lot, and it created this lot down here. And a 25-foot-wide non-disturbance, non-fertilization buffer was imposed. And it seems, based on our research, really primarily as, I guess, as a buffer to the adjacent neighbor, but beyond that, didn't really serve any other purpose. We got a request to do an amendment to eliminate it. There's a lot of bamboo in there, and they wanted to get rid of the covenant. We did get opposition from the neighbor to the north here, strong opposition, to be quite honest. Really would like a buffer, and also raised questions about, you know, it being a green belt. I don't agree with the term that it's a green belt. It's a buffer between two property owners. So, you know, having discussions with the property owner to the north, I did talk on a few occasions, and with the applicant representative for this property, I have a resolution to eliminate the buffer, but a condition, and they're willing to do it, that they have to provide fencing and evergreen screening along the north property line to at least maintain the visual buffer between the two properties.
Do we have reports on any of this?
I have a resolution, actually.
Was the other property owner amenable to a fence and screening?
The north property line, we'd prefer to see the whole buffer stay. I mean, that's the bottom line. But at the very least, we'd want the board to at least impose something there. Now, I'm not going to say that that's going to make that property owner completely happy, but if you're looking at this, that's the, you know...
It's a compromise.
The compromise.
They're both a little unhappy, and are both a little happy.
That's what we can do sometimes.
And there was a large portion of invasive species of the bamboo that has to come out.
I'd like to get it out, which is so hard to do. And there's a subdivision map. It was so interesting, because it really was, really, I think, just a buffer, because when you look, when they did the subdivision, imposed this buffer, this house was already existing at the time. And so notice, they didn't impose one down here, where you have a vacant piece of property. So I think there was enough ground here to consider it. So if you look at the resolution, that first part there, that you see up here in all the italicized, that's actually just the language from the actual covenant. It says what can and can't happen in those buffers. And on the second page, I recommend approving it, and then subject to providing fencing with evergreen screening along the north of the property boundary in order to maintain a buffer. And, yeah, last year, they told me they were completely agreeable. And then, of course, this additional, the legal documents to be approved by the town attorney.
Do we specify what kind of fencing, or is it just...
I mean, if you want to do, you know, we normally don't, because there is, but, you know, height, I don't, you know, typically like to do, because you can't have a four-foot fence, and that needs to require a front yard. So that would require a variance. So I just say fencing. I believe it's going to be, well, I could find out. I don't know, actually.
Right. If the fence is to...
Well, that's why I made sure I said fencing with the evergreen to sort of...
Yeah, that will cover it.
Okay, should cover it.
Okay. Any questions? Okay, a motion to approve?
Motion.
By, motion by Gloria, second by Craig, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed extensions, six in favor, one absent. Number eight is Anthony's next. It's off the agenda.
Yes, so the board knows. We previously had a redo in that, one incomplete, because no one so far along, like, missed something. And they were great, and they actually just provided me with additional information, but I didn't get a chance to redo it. So we don't just take that one off. We don't have to do anything.
Okay, and then...
Hampton six.
Hampton six is one more extension. I actually am meeting with the team tomorrow. So we're just going to do an extension of the action deadline until October 26, 2023.
Okay, motion? Motion by Kate, second by George, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed extensions...
What was the extension date?
Oh, I'm sorry, October 26.
10/26.
Thank you.
Six in favor, one absent to complete the vote. I want to give you the address. It's 39 West Montauk Highway, Hampton Bayes. Okay, the next is 13 Figaro's and Preapp.
Yep, so this is a new subdivision application. They've had the aerial up here. This is Lewis Road. This is at the corner of Lewis and Old Country Road, and you have the railroad track right there. Here's the property up here in yellow, odd-shaped piece. I'm showing some preserved land over here, town preserved land, and there's some way back here that doesn't show up on the aerial. So everybody knows where this property, you know, where it's located. It is in the CR-80 zoning district, two-acre zoning, as well as the Aquafer Protection Overlay District. I have them up here, but I...
Pine Barrens compatible growth?
Yeah, it is. I'm sorry, I didn't put that in there. I'll fix that.
And what's it for, Anthony?
So let me actually just...
Yeah, do you have something? It doesn't say how many lots here.
Oh, really?
Subdivision...
Four lot, four lot plan.
Four lot.
Is it a four lot?
So, so they came in with a yield map on the whole piece, and actually, I went over the yield map. Everything conforms to the zoning requirements, so they're showing 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. And they're actually showing a park area. Typically, if you're not requiring a park to be built on within a subdivision, you don't have to count it towards your yield. But it won't make a difference here, because that's not going to net them any additional yield. So it's a six-yield, six-lot yield on this property. What they're proposing is a, I would say partially clustered. It is a cluster of four lots. Remember, when you go to four, you get yourself out of the affordable housing requirement. So they're showing four lots down here, a larger lot over here. I don't like all the improvements when they put that on there. And then two open space parcels on either side of this totaling 50% of the property. This one down here does sort of connect up.
Connect, yeah.
So this first, this application actually is complete. I'm going to recommend the hearing for November 9. But just one thing...
So this cluster satisfies the requirement of the...
Satisfies the requirement. Well, just one thing, because this affordable thing always gets to me. Having done this a long time, and having seen that this lot is extremely large compared to the small ones, my concern was, because they labeled this as the main house, to me that implies there's a second residence potentially. So the applicant knows she can't be here today, but there ultimately would have to be a covenant or something, that no carriage house around there, because as far as I'm concerned, now you're into the fifth residence, and then cleverly found a way to get out of the affordable housing requirement. So we've done this before, and Lisa Poyer, who represents, knows that. So, you know, this can only have one house on there, no second residence.
And what is the square footage on that larger lot?
That is three acres.
And it's...
And the other ones are, you know, roughly, you know, an acre, acre and a half, something like that.
And it's two-acre zoning.
It's two-acre zoning.
Okay.
And how much open space total?
50%. And so it would be, about six and a half, seven, eight, or something like that.
Nice.
So we'll deem this one complete, and we'll schedule the hearing for November 9.
Anthony, is that the intersection of Lewis and 104?
No, Lewis and Old Country Road is where the real line is.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve and set a public hearing for November 9?
Motion.
Motion by George, second by Gloria, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed extensions, six in favor, one absent. Okay. So then Buddha Hampton Site Plan Special Exception?
Bud Hampton.
Bud Hampton. 2033 Montauk Highway, Bridgehampton.
So everybody knows where this property is. So this is the Carvel site, just sitting out there in Bridgehampton, right across from the Com, uh, the Bridgehampton Towns.
This is the Carvel that was not going to be in any way changed when we saw the...
The subdivision.
The Conner application, two weeks ago, or four weeks ago.
So now we have an application for a change of use, so to speak, but it is a special exception application, as you know. So this is a request for a pre-submission conference for the non-medical cannabis, recreational cannabis retail store to occupy the building. And really, it's a lot of existing condition. You can sort of see here, a site plan, Montauk Highway, you know, with some buffers. Probably going to get into, you know, discussions about all the issues, there are going to be criteria, special exception criteria. I'll make sure, prior to the pre-submission conference, I'll send everybody the information so you know, you know, what to look at.
Exactly.
This is the first one. I'm getting inquiries, I'm getting, you know...
We got lots of letters.
Lots of letters.
Lots of controversy.
So, you know, we're going to have to trudge through this, and, you know, it's the first time we're getting one of these. So it's new territory, and I anticipate people are going to have comments and things to say. But nevertheless, the towns opted into the program, so...
And this, and this is within the zoning that as...
This is highway business zone.
As defined.
Highway business and shopping center, basically.
And I don't know where, whether, won't be able to find out, but I'd be curious, because this all relates to getting permits from the state, right? Everything I've read is that that's all still in flux, still, you know, going back and forth. So I think that would be something to try to understand as this application goes.
100%, and one of the special exception criteria talks about the licensing. So that's why it's good for the pre-submission, because it's not a formal application. So if there's any questions or issues about that, you could certainly raise it, but that's one of the...
A CO is, one of those standards is that a CO is conditioned upon proof of licensure by somebody in the...
And it also gives this board an opportunity to review the legislation that the town adopted and make any recommendations that we might want to make. So we might want to have a special session on that and discuss.
So I'm recommending here, we have some scheduled for November, we only have one hearing in each of the months, so November, December 14th is the hearing on this one.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what's the date?
December 14th.
December 14th, that's right before...
Anthony, would there be, should we be looking at the entire Conner application for traffic along with this particular usage? And how, and where, how do we do that?
So what I would say to that is, that's a very good inquiry and a very good question. And let me look into see how we could, because one thing that's going to come out of my review, since it's a special exception, is the CECL review, which is part of a formal application.
Right.
And so let me, let me think about that, how we could go about it. Your question's noted, and I think appropriate to look at.
Yeah, because I think what I read in the paper was that they would actually move this cannabis retail store into that Conner, or, I'm not sure, so I...
I think it's, I think it's a good question, and certainly, any project that I, you know, reviewing, I'm aware of what has been proposed in terms of the subdivision site plan, so I'll be sure to address it.
Right.
But I appreciate that.
Right, because the app parcel since is really part of the whole subdivision there in many ways, so you can't fragment it.
Yeah, and like I said, we'll see come December 14th. A big part of this is for the board to ask the applicant representative questions.
And the public, and the public to come.
Yep.
So it'll be interesting. So December 14th.
Okay, so pre-submission hearing, setting Bud Hampton for December 14th. A motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, and second by Craig, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed extensions, six in favor, one absent. Number 15 is off the agenda.
Yep, and that one I met with the applicant representative yesterday, they've got some changes to make to the plan.
Okay. 16, Bartlett Tree Experts, that's 162 Sandy Hollow Road and 909 North Sea Road, North Sea.
So this is the Bartlett Tree site for existing non-conforming use. We deemed this incomplete some time ago. If you recall, they're proposing...
A new barn in the backyard shed.
In the backyard, in the already, you know, some storage trailers or structures, we'll have to see. I think they're just sort of manufactured. They're relatively small, literally just a few hundred square feet.
They're replacing something, aren't they?
Well, they're using it to, storage, partly stored with chemicals, which are currently being stored outside, so they're doing, put in the building. We did deem it incomplete. The engineer took a review. They submitted new plans. I sent it to the engineer. The engineer came back, said everything was addressed. So in this case, I'm going to recommend deeming the application complete, but waiving the hearing with a 30-day written comment period.
30 days, yeah.
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 Got this one, bud.
Motion. Motion by Kate, second by Tom, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed extensions, six in favor, one absent. Number 19 is off the agenda, Old View Part 4. Anthony is continuing to review that.
Yep.
The site plan, number 23, National Golf Links of Ameri, oh no, that's Claire's. Okay.
Number 20.
There were two, two ocean beach pathways.
Yeah, number 19 is off. I have two Joe Gazzes. That one requires more than looking on my part. And the next one is okay, actually, so. And I spoke to Jackie Fenland on both of these, since she handled the prior review of the other right to build. So number 20, this is, again, you've got Watermill Tow Road over here. Part of the development section of the map includes new access, new roads coming in here. In this particular property, it's CR-200, it's the Aquafer Protection Overlay District. The applicant is, Joe's coming for a right to build on this one. They're showing the road extensions, they're showing the easements that the board required as part of the open development section, which are all shown here, and all the development rights in my resolution, which I'll show you, have been submitted by Joe. So it's really just a right to build.
Is the access within the old file map?
Yes, that's part of the old file map development section, yeah. So it is within the map.
And how much of the development rights are coming from outside of the school district?
So it's 50, 50%, which is what the...
Our policy is.
The town code allows for. These development rights calculations are always tedious. I always tell the board this. I started calculating these for Joe Gazzes when I was an intern at the Pine Barrens Commission. Apparently, my internship is still happening, so I'm still calculating these.
But Dave Wilcox is a good...
He does. He looks at it for everything. Just so the board understands, because I don't like going through all these little calculations. Joe does 50% from within the school district, 50% without. Joe also, and it is in the chart here, you will see, it says part of certificate, part of a certificate. Joe uses parts of certificates, and then he gets new certificates issued for whatever is left over. So I just, you know, be aware that that's why it's written like that.
Right.
The other thing is, if you look at the bottom of page two, where it says recorded various documents, and I have them blanked out, that information has been submitted to the town attorney's office, it's been reviewed, but they haven't been filed yet. So I spoke to Jackie Fenland today, and she said, "That's okay, just make them conditions of the approval, but they have to be filed before the building permit." So if you look at where it says whereas, 1, 2, and 3, those are going to be included in the resolution as conditions to file those documents and submit them prior to submitting a building permit.
Okay, 1, 2, and 3.
Yeah.
I'm just looking at the math here. The Southampton School District, you're getting a certificate for 57,000 square feet. West Hampton Beach, you're at 100,000 square feet. That does not 50/50 to me. What am I missing?
I don't know yet.
The chart in the middle of the page, top of the page.
The existing lot?
Is there, yeah, the existing lot has an underlying...
Has an underlying amount of, the underlying lot has a square footage attached to it.
Okay.
There's a TDR allocation in the underlying lot?
Yeah, there is a TDR allocation for the underlying lot, technically speaking, that covers. I mean, if you want, I could certainly re-go through these with Dave Wilcox.
Get the proper percentages.
But I, you know, I don't know if I can do it carefully. You know, because if you look at, you know, what was reduced, what was, do you want me to adjourn this and come back, Gloria?
Did you double-check it with Dave?
Not yet, because usually, once I do it, Dave, like he did last time, always comes back and says, "I have the original certificates, which is why you're not getting them today to sign until I get to the occasion date."
Well, I think, I think maybe the answer is just the underlying lot that's in the Southampton School District.
You get that square...
What is that square footage?
Yeah, okay.
Then, then the math is going to be obvious.
Yeah.
Does it say it in the third whereas here?
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking to see if it does.
It is.
You need .211 remaining to equal that .488.
And they resolve. So it's .7857 is... No, no, that's the total.
That's the total of, yeah. So it looks like the, you know, West Hampton Beach.
He's going to vest the property with a full development...
Right.
Of 200,000 square feet.
You have 42,860 underlying for that existing property.
So you add that to the 157,140, and a 200,000?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's what it's saying, the third whereas identifies the 42,860, and then it's a deficit of 157,140, which is identified in the chart. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Does that line up for you, Gloria?
Yeah.
Okay.
You need .2143 for the underlying.
I think that does add up, actually. If you look at the underlying plus 57, that they're bringing in from Southampton.
Right.
We can put it off.
Yeah.
100,000. It's half and half.
50/50, 50 West Hampton, 50...
50 West Hampton, 50 Southampton.
Right, and he's got...
When you take the 57,140, then he's transferring to plus...
Plus the 42,860.
2860 is the math, but where do I see the 42,860?
It's on the third whereas, on the first page.
Thank you. That's the piece, I've been trying to read this quickly, and I...
I know.
Right, yeah.
There's too many numbers.
So it does add up to 50, actually.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there it is. .2143 is there, too.
I'm just nerdy when it comes to numbers.
No, no, that's good.
So I think maybe just include that in the whereas, which includes the 42,860 square feet of the existing...
Yep.
Inherent in the parcel, yeah.
Yeah, so I'll fix that.
Makes, just makes it clear.
Well, I think we do have it, right?
Well, I think they want to add another statement in there, maybe that, you know, the existing plus the transfer is equal to this amount, is equivalent to 50%.
Perfect, thank you.
Right, right.
Plus the three filings that are going to be conditioned as well.
Right.
And then with that, I would recommend approval.
Anthony, what was the rationale for splitting up the West Hampton Beach development rights?
Two different certificates.
What's available?
Yeah, I mean, you know, Joe will use what he can, save what he can. You know, maybe, maybe he has something else going on in, the town code allows for up to 50%, so, you know, we never stray from that, but he might have some use for the rest of the development rights somewhere else.
He calls it a baby certificate.
That's, that's what Jackie used to call them. Now that you said that, I'm going to change it, and we're just going to call it a new certificate. I think that sounds better.
Yeah.
Is it printed on, is it printed on a post-it?
Exactly.
Okay, so you'll make those changes, Anthony? Okay?
You can just approve it then with those changes.
Okay, so motion to approve with the changes.
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by Kate, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed extensions, six in favor, one absent.
Out of curiosity, Anthony, the other application that's off the agenda, that's in the same development?
It is.
Okay.
But there's some things I'm, I spoke to Jackie about that.
Okay.
It doesn't, what Joe gave me doesn't match what I see on the improved development section.
Okay.
Same, but same...
And it's the same, it looked like it was, but...
Yeah, for sure.
I think you're done, Anthony.
I'm done.
So Claire has some applications off the agenda.
Yeah.
So number seven is off. 10 Marine.
I only had two.
You only have...
Oh, and then, sorry, the 23 National...
Number 23, the National Golf Links of America, Trifarm is off. Okay?
7, 10?
7 and 23.
23, 7 and 23.
And the name of seven is 10.
Oh.
That's why it's 10. 10, so 10 is...
So Claire, do you want to do Lester Elliston first?
We could do that, but if you want to jump to 24, we have Julie Green here, the historian, and I don't know if we waste her time, but if you want to come up.
Come, Julie.
She can explain this designation.
Of the West Hampton Beach movie theater.
No, this is the...
Bridgehampton, how is it?
Bridgehampton.
Julie, come to the table.
Oh, okay, great. This is creating a historic district.
Historic district, right.
And so these are the guidelines that I prepared for the board, and they're online, but this helps.
Nice to see them in paper.
Yes.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
So I'm kind of filling in for Ed Wisniewski with the Landmarks and District Board, but I prepared the guidelines, and they've been bandied about a bit, so we're working on[1735.33] and they've been bandied about a bit, so we're working on these, on this Bridge Hampton Historic District as the town's first district that they will be putting together. So we need to take these off, so I can see. So good afternoon. So just a little background on history, so Bridge Hampton...
Julie, give us your name and association.
Oh, excuse me, Julie Green, Southampton Town Historian.
Thank you.
So Bridge Hampton was founded in sixteen fifty-six, and so it's naturally, it's rich in history. It was an agrarian society, so beauty was abundant, but the Bullshead Historic District will be focusing primarily on the architecture of the downtown Main Street area, so the appearance and the character of the downtown core. The core is appealing because it invites strolling along Main Street with a small-town feel, where a number of the shops not only cater to everyday needs of residents, but there, there's a hardware store in the center of it, and many of these shops, plus a deli, restaurants, and its famous candy kitchen luncheonette are all owned by locals. Of particular historical importance, importance at the eastern end of the gateway is the nineteen-ten Founder's Monument on, on its small green at the center of the Bridge Hampton Sag Harbor Turnpike intersection, which is a historic intersection. This was the road leading from Ocean Beach to Sag Harbor, so this was, in the whaling's days, this is a very important intersection for the town of Southampton. And then tucked away kind of a little bit to the south and west off of Main Street is the Triangular Commons. This was a village green that was used during militia training in the sixteen-seventies, and that's where the name comes, the Bullshead name comes from. By the early seventeen hundreds, the settlement had a school, businesses, a tavern, stagecoach stop, and residents were dotted along, mostly on the northern side of, of Main Street. By the time the railroad arrived in eighteen seventy, this was the branch terminus for twenty-five years. The train stopped in Bridge Hampton, there was a little train called the Scoot that went into Sag Harbor. That has been, that was eliminated in the nineteen-fifties, but trains further east did not, were not put in until eighteen ninety-five. So for quite a long time, Bridge Hampton was it, and I, we'd like to think that a lot of times, if you get off the train today, if the people that got off in eighteen-seventies, eighteen-eighties, would kind of recognize Main Street as it, as it is still recognizable today. By the time, so we're trying to keep that eighteenth-century layout pattern, which still exists, and the charm of the hamlets, Main Street exists in its blending of the types of buildings from civic and religious to business. On the north side, west to Corworth Avenue, the layout makes use of uniform setbacks, wood and brick structures that are attached or semi-attached. Some historic buildings have been altered to varying degrees with built-out storefronts. Many of the structures on Main Street in Bridge Hampton actually are still, the nineteenth-century buildings are still there. They're just behind storefronts that have been bumped out to the sidewalks. So the structures are there, and you can see them looking up, you know, at their roof lines. From the side, you can see quite a few windows that are historic, in character. Also of note, Main Street itself was the scene of early fire department carnival road races, automobile races, that occurred between nineteen fourteen and nineteen twenty-one. Start and finish line were right on Main Street in Bridge Hampton, and a lot of those photographs of those races, you can see the buildings that still exist today. The most prominent structures downtown to date, date to the middle of the nineteenth century and show the era's outstanding architecture, like the federal-style Bridge Hampton Museum, it's William Corworth's house, the Victorian eighteen-seventy-six Hampton Library, the Greek Revival Hampton, Bridge Hampton Inn, the Presbyterian and Methodist Churches, on up to the nineteen-twenty-three classic revival-style Community House. These buildings have been well-maintained, to say nothing of the recent restorations of the Bullshead Inn, which is now the Topping Rose House, and then Nathaniel Rogers' House by the CPF Fund here on, on the east end of Main Street. What makes Bridge Hamptons downtown unusual and worth preserving is its varied but complementary uses, from restaurants and retail to a sizable civic centers such as the Community House, to old churches with a cemetery dating to seventeen forty between them. Many of the commercial structures were once residents, built in the local tradition using shingles and clapberding. It is rare that such a coastal community on Long Island has so much of its architectural past, from Victorian back to Greek revival, and federal is still in existence. In recognizing the citizens' desire to protect these historical qualities that are the heritage of Bridge Hampton, the design guidelines which you all have for maintenance and rehabilitation and new construction have been developed by, by the town's Historic Division, myself, and the Landmarks and Historic District Board. They are intended to assist property owners in maintaining, rehabilitating, repairing, and adding to the historic buildings while respecting the original significant character that exists today. They are generally written to allow for individual application and flexibility for owners while retaining the important architectural features of the buildings in question. And what makes buildings, building worthy of preservation is its placement on its lot and in the broader context of the street or area, the materials used, its architectural style, and how it has been altered over time. That way, there is a better chance of saving it. The goal here is to establish a historic district in Bridge Hampton that will allow for more effective conservation and more desirable planning when changes need to be made.
Julie, what are the parameters of this Main Street?
So there are ninety-eight properties, and they run from the west, on the north side from the Bridge Hampton, well, the former Bridge Hampton National Bank, which is now Dime Bank, just east of Snake Hollow, all the way to the Topping Rose House on the, one Bridge Hampton Sag Harbor Turnpike.
It's the east side of the turnpike.
Yeah, on the east side of the turnpike, and then to the south, starting with the Nathaniel Rogers' House on the east side of, of Ocean Road, west to, to the...
Community House, right?
No, it's a little bit further than the Community House, goes all the way down. There are some of those structures are non-contributing, so past Citarella, west of Citarella, down to, and the name is just escaping. Hildre, thank you.
Yeah. So, so it go, does it, it captures the old Dime Bank?
Yes, yes, it's considered, we're considering it a contributing structure because of the, the nature of its architecture. It lends itself to being, it fits. It complements the rest, and it's kind of a nice start. You know, the Methodist Church that's down on the western end of Main Street actually was down on the eastern end of Main Street, and when, in eighteen forty-two, when the, the big Presbyterian church was built right in the center of Main Street, the Methodists were not happy, and they moved their church to the western end so that they could be the first...
First that you see.
First that you see when you enter Bridge Hampton, so.
So there's no relationship between this Bridge Hampton School District boundaries and these boundaries?
No, this is a, its own, yeah, we have, kind of, yeah, there are outlines in there of the, the layout.
Right.
For the structure. We do go down School Street, a little bit...
Past the Community House, Fire Department?
Yes, just the Community House, we don't include the Fire Department.
Okay.
But we include on the east side of School Street, a couple of things, we have a, the town owns a parking lot back in there. And then we go down Ocean, encapsulating some of the structures that are just north of Hull Street. They are wonderful examples of small homes that were part of the very early Triangular Commons. And then, of course, the church and the cemetery itself go, they go south and east, and they come out on Ocean Road, so.
Julie, I just want to mention, I think you and I first started to work with each other a little bit when I was up working on the Bridge Hampton Traffic Safety Project, and you were working on putting up, I think, a historic monument
Yes.
on Main Street.
Yes.
And, you know, and I think it grew from there to the Village Green, looking at that, and I just want to say, I, while I worked many, many hours and walked up and down Main Street dozens of times for the traffic safety project part of it.
Right.
My appreciation for the historic nature of, you know, Bridge Hampton really, you know, came forth, and I think the work that was done at the Nathaniel Rogers' House, connect, and then working with the state DOT, we connected the monument with crosswalks so that people could actually get to it.
That's right.
Up until twenty-nineteen or twenty-one. The monument was there, but you couldn't get to it.
Soul out on its little island, yeah, so, yeah, it's a wonderful...
We put in an elevated sidewalk, and, you know, I went up and looked at that a number of times, and I'd encourage anybody, if you have a minute, to walk over there and take a look at that monument.
Yeah, yeah. The monument, kind of the brainchild of the Presbyterian minister in nineteen-ten, was to, to honor, it's not a war memorial, although that's what it, it's, it shows on, on its, each of its sides, but it's for the, to commemorate the founders and their descendants that served during those war campaigns. So that's its, its, originally, it was, that was, it was focused was on the founders of Bridge Hampton. And you all know that Bridge Hampton is named for the bridge that links, so the settlements were, were, all the settlements were to the south.
Right.
So it was Meacox and Sag, Sagaponic, and the bridge was built in the sixteen-eighties, linking the two, thus giving the name Bridge Hampton to the greater area. And the road that is now, you know, Montauk Highway, Main Street through Bridge Hampton was, came in a little bit later. One of the first houses, which is, which is very sad to me, that was torn down, was Wick's Tavern. That's at the site of a new building on the north side of the corner of, of the Turnpike and Main Street, which we consider a contributing structure. Again, it's complementing the other, the Nathaniel Rogers' House.
That's a doctor's office?
Yeah, New York Langone Hospital, it's an out...
We worked hard to make it look that way.
Yes, yes.
It was originally going to be brick.
Yes. So, so that, so there was a very old house there in sixteen-eighty-six that was built by John Wicks, and unfortunately, it was taken down to make room for a, a gas station. So these, these things, these things that evolve have not ruined the character of Bridge Hampton, although if it continues to go in that way, we will lose the downtown. Because it's sad, it's become kind of, you know, with the traffic and the congestion, it's become, just get me through to, to East Hampton, you know, get me through this light, and I think with the Nathaniel Rogers' House, the town restoring that and putting all that effort and support into that home, I think we've got people slowing down, and the monument, and really kind of getting a good look and appreciation for it.
So are there limitations to the owners of these properties as to what they can do?
There will be, the, the Landmarks and Historic District Board, anything that, what will be done to any of the structures. And we're talking the front facade, we're not talking about the backs of any of the buildings that are not visible from the street. Will have certificate of appropriateness for anything that will be done, and this is just exterior.
Mm-hmm. Julie, I was just going to say, has there been any pushback from any of the current owners of these buildings?
Um, a little bit, yeah, I wouldn't say that, you know, a lot of, a lot of people have the idea that this is my property and you can't help me, you know, but I think we're educating people to understand what they can and cannot do. I think there are buildings and people and businesses that have already, Bridge Hampton Inn, for, for one, the Topping Rose, they have put all this effort to fulfill these historic parameters, and they want that to continue with their neighbors. So I think everybody's pretty much, there are enough people that want it to be the way it is and keep it that way, and put some historic restrictions, restrictions isn't a great word, but...
There's some benefits, too.
There's a lot of benefits to it, yes, there's easements.
Financial.
Financial easements as well, yeah, so, um...
Okay.
Yeah, it's beautiful.
Question and comment. So I don't know if you've been following East Hampton Rowdy Hall?
Yes, the color of Rowdy Hall.
Right, so I see you have material and texture. Do you have color?
No paint color, no paint color.
Okay, because I think that's where they're running up against an issue, is like, well, what is the paint palette that you're looking to achieve, and they just said, no, not black, so let's, um...
There is no, there is no color.
Okay.
We've decided that that is something that's...
It's up to the ARB or historic, who decides that, I guess?
I think if you're going to do anything to a historic structure, you would have to come before the, the Landmarks Board, but we would not be restricting in color. So if somebody wanted to painted their, their brick building, you know, if Ammon's Restaurant had wanted, yeah, I mean, we had Helen Ficaloris, she, she had pink shutters and, and pink trim, and, and that was not, that, we wouldn't have stopped that.
Okay.
Or that wouldn't be stopped by the Landmarks Board.
So, Betty, sorry, no, go ahead.
I was just going to say, second, I started my career on Bridge Hampton Main Street, and I'm really pleased to see the work that you've done here. I spent a lot of time with Dick Hendrickson, wrote up all his weather reports. I just learned a lot, just firsthand, about the history of this area, so I know it's probably been a lot of work, and I just wanted to publicly commend you for that, because it's really valuable.
Oh, thank you. Um, it's kind of a labor of love. I worked in Bridge Hampton, I kind of, when I started my whole second career after nine-eleven and moving out of the city, I, I started working, I went back to school and, for an archival degree, and become a librarian in the interim of all of that, so I worked at the Hampton Library with my first internship. And I just, you know, Bridge Hampton has just become one of those places where, if you dig deep and, and look, that a lot of these are still the same families that have settled there in the sixteen-seventies, you know, the people that settled Bridge Hampton and Sagaponic, they're the grandsons of the founders of the, of the town that lived here in the village. So it's a real, and a lot of those families are still there, and it's important, I think, that we, we start somewhere in the town. I mean, we have seven districts that are in villages outside of the town's jurisdiction, so this is just following suit, and this would be the, you know, the start of, you know, there are other, other hamlets, you know, Watermill, East Quogue, Hampton Bays, that we could work with these types of things. I think it's, it's important, it's a, it's a sense of place, and that's really important for people.
Great job.
Great, it's wonderful. Julie, you're a treasure.
Thank you.
I just wanted to bring up a zoning issue. This is VB, most of this area that's involved is village business.
Mm-hmm.
And we at one point had an application to increase the size of the buildings by a large percentage of square footage. And we really, in VB, didn't have restrictions, and so we wanted to do some legislation. Claire, actually, you wrote up some legislation for us. We never pushed it through, but it would be, if you increase it more than fifteen thousand square feet, okay, that it's special exception.
Oh, five thousand square feet.
Five, right.
It is, it is actually, for village business, it is a special exception after five thousand square feet.
Right.
Yes, so that is, that is in place right now.
But was that the new stuff, I have to...
It's in place. Do you want to lower the threshold?
No, we want to, we want to make sure that we don't have a BMF on Main Street, you know, a two-story, two-and-a-half-story building on top of an existing building, it was that corner property. Right at the corner of Ocean and Lumber, and...
Okay.
Well, let us look into it.
Right.
You know, there should be a marriage between the Historic District and VB.
Yes.
And the hamlet of Bridge Hampton.
Right, right. Yeah, the guidelines would, are all following the interior, Secretary of the Interior standards for rehabilitation and restoration work, and massing is one of those things, you know, we wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to...
You had a lot of yes and no.
Yes. Yes, you know, you wouldn't have a tiny little, and not a big, yeah.
Yeah, I'll take a peek at that.
Okay. Well, Julie, I...
I mean, I, this would also require any new buildings to be built, looking like they belonged in the eighteen-hundreds.
Right, they would, they would be required to fit in with the other structures, and that's what we're, that's where this is coming from. You know, we're losing historic structures, and then we're getting these thing, these, you know, which one of these doesn't belong, kind of thing.
We'll become unnamed at the moment, but we know what we're talking about.
We know what we're talking about, and I, you know, I, as a historian, I, progress has to be made, and that's how you, history is being made every day, so moving forward is, is fine, but sometimes when you lose things, you lose that history, too. You know, you drive, you drive down the street and go, I don't remember what that, was there on the corner, and it, and it's a real, real shame, and then we lose that. I mean, we have Civil War veterans that, that lived in some of these homes, we have revolutionary, you know, so when those homes go or structures go, then we lose that history, too, so.
Yeah.
Claire, from a process point of view, assuming this is going to get approved, which I imagine it would, does that mean when we get an application, it goes to the Landmarks Board the same way it goes to the Conservation Board or the Town Engineer, or whatever it may be, they're automatically then sent the application?
Yep, they would be given a referral on, at anything in this district. So, you know, at this, right, we have a threshold of seventy-five years old, you know, we send it to them anyways, but in this case, it would be anything in this district, so there wouldn't, there'd be vacant piece of property would go to them.
And so we basically would not be seeing to approve anything without the, their input.
Oh, yeah. That's what that would be required, yeah.
Same way that we...
So there are...
But it helps, I mean, in commercial, it helps, because they're getting that feedback immediately during the process. You know, rather than other people going to get, submit building permits, and they're going to be told, no, no, you probably should do this, you know? So it does help, you know, in a commercial process.
So we have two active applications, or one active, one about to be active in this zone, so we would have to refer.
It, it's, in this case, we would, we should refer, yes, yeah, I think we actually, we made that comment on this one, but we'll do it in this case.
Okay, so should I just do a resolution that says you fully support the adoption of the Historic District?
Yes. After her wonderful presentation, I'll mention that.
Great work, I'm gonna hand that to you.
Good, good.
Julie, I'm gonna give you this back.
Okay.
I mean, I, it's beautiful and I looked at it, but I don't.
I wanna keep it.
I'm gonna keep one.
I wanna keep one.
Okay, absolutely.
Second, I have a motion to, to support the Historic District in Bridgehampton. Motion by George, second by Tom, all in favor. Post extension, six in favor, one absent. So, thank you, Julie.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Have a lovely afternoon.
What's that?
Absolutely.
It's yours.
Quick, thank you very much for pushing me ahead.
No problem. I'm gonna let her go next and then I'll be back to do my.
Okay, so Teresa, we're moving. Yeah, we have, yeah. So, Teresa, we have number one, nine hundred Silver Lane and seven ninety-five Ocean Road. Hi, Teresa.
So, this application is for slot line modification to transfer a portion of the parcel known as ninety Silver to seven ninety-five Silver. And the resulting lots will look like this and will give the landlocked parcel known as seven ninety-five Silver access onto, I'm sorry, seven ninety-five Ocean onto Silver Lane and will give them frontage. We had had a public hearing on this application and there were no comments during the public hearing portion. The fire division, prevention office had made some recommendations which are outlined on the report. And making sure that there is a proper street access, you know, street signage for their properties and fire hydrants are accessible. Engineering also recommended that utility easements be provided to seven ninety-five Ocean as they appear to originate from ninety-four Silver Lane, as well as a driveway easement. Ninety-four Silver Lane is this parcel right here. And then if they are planning on creating a driveway over their new access, the curb application should be made to highways and then providing drainage for any impervious So, generally speaking, the planning division recommends that prior to final subdivision application, the wetlands boundary, which was last flagged in two thousand and six, be updated and or verified where possible. Any copies of existing driveway easements should be included in the final application for existing driveway easements, particularly over these, these lots here, if there's any there. The one area of discussion is, the parcel is, the parcels are located in the, within a mile and a half of the federally endangered northern long-eared bat summer occurrence. And it should just, a note should be added to the file that said, or to the map that says that no clearing, tree clearing will occur during December one, or, sorry, outside of December one and February twenty-eighth window. And if they do need to do that, they would need to get DEC approval prior to, I don't anticipate they're going to be doing any clearing, but it should just be noted that there, there's a window there. That was the one area of discussion, if you wanted to have that added to the map. Again, consistent with the engineer's report, they recommend utility and driveway easements over seven ninety-four if they don't already have them and then curb cut application and drainage structures.
Is someone representing you?
Brian Lacasio is representing them. Unfortunately, he is unlikely to be here today. He said he had some other arrangement, other meetings that he had to be here, but he did send an email yesterday saying he found the report to be acceptable.
Are there any questions or discussions on this? Nope. If not, motion to approve the pre-application report on ninety Silver Lane and seven ninety-five Ocean LLC.
Motion.
Motion by Craig, second by Tom, all in favor. Post extension, six in favor, one absent.
Okay, so the next application we're going to discuss is Charles LLC, which is number nine over there. So, there was a pre-submission conference on the application on August twenty-fourth. The applicant wants to construct this eight thousand square foot, one-story medical office and associated parking and landscaping on existing, a parcel containing the existing diner and already containing an existing access, cross-access. You can see it here, it's already been provided from Flying Point Road to this parcel so that you have full cross-access. My dates are wrong, I have to update the date on the comments, but the planning division recommends that a new full application, site plan application be submitted inclusive of an engineering, elevation, landscape and lighting plans, a stormwater pollution prevention plan should be submitted and a traffic study should be submitted. We are recommending that, oh, just go back, the site already contains an existing use, restaurant use, and it does have some employee housing, so those, so there's eighty-four parking stalls associated with the existing use inclusive of the employee housing and the cross-access. It's a type-one action, so CCR will need to be completed prior to getting the application complete. Again, the applicant is proposing an eight thousand square foot, one-story building. We should discuss whether or not we want to have the footprint reduced and having it a two-story structure in order to provide some flexibility in designing the parking and providing some landscape, you know, parking islands, as well as the required truck loading stalls and parking aisles. The conceptual site plan notes that the restaurant currently contains seven, two-hundred-and-seventy-three seats, however, the parking calculations note that the restaurant contains two-hundred-and-twenty-five seats. So, you can see here, two-hundred-and-seventy-three here and then two-hundred-and-twenty-five. And then I spoke to the fire marshal and they stated that there's an occupancy rating of two-hundred-and-sixty-three people inclusive of the outdoor parking. So, that just needs to be tidied up when they submit the final site plan application. And then they do need to provide off, you know, off-street truck loading spaces for both the restaurant and the medical office use. Again, this is a heavily trafficked area and you're adding eight thousand square feet of medical offices and fifty-four additional parking spaces. So, a traffic study should be provided, which does traffic counts throughout the year rather than just in the summer because there is an increase in traffic throughout the year now.
Teresa, could I just jump in there for a second?
Yeah.
Most traffic studies, I think it's understood, but I think we may want to mention that in addition to traffic counts, then accident history.
Okay.
For that immediate area is provided. That's normally a three-year accident recap.
Is that something that you'd like to see going forward on your, on any requested traffic?
I think on, you know, any of these busy roads, we should be looking not only at traffic counts, but we should be looking at accident histories too.
With respect to access, because they already do have cross-access that has been constructed and for which they are getting some credit for parking spaces, consideration should be, it should be discussed whether or not we want to have right-in, right-out access onto Montalk Highway. You know, again, you are providing, as here, as shown on the aerial, a full cross-access from Flying Point Road to Montalk Highway. So, it is going to be easy for someone to take Flying Point Road to make that left to go further west as needed. So, that's something that you should discuss, whether or not that's something you want to see. Again, that may change the parking layout and that may give them a little more flexibility because you would possibly, uh-oh, what did I do? So, you could possibly close off one of these entrances or reconfigure one of these entrances and get.
Gain some parking.
Gain some potential parking.
I, I think we also need to start looking at the traffic on Flying Point Road because we're building an awful lot of stuff that we're saying that's the way to get out to make, to go west.
And then there's the application across the street, remember we were talking about left turns and how to get in and out of that property.
But, you know, we've got, we've got two new, two new medical buildings and there's a third something going in plus this.
Right, and Flying Point Road is sometimes used as a bypass, so I, I understand, I will make sure to include that in the traffic study recommendation.
I don't know the, I don't know how Flying Point Road is categorized, whether it's a feeder road, whether it's a secondary road, but it's a narrow road and it's getting a tremendous amount of traffic because we're directing people out that way.
And most of the, the trade parade traffic is going, is using it to go east.
Right, unfortunately, it is, it's a bottleneck at this intersection right to the west of here and, and I'll admit that I, you know, when I was doing field inspections for the environment division, I would use it to get around to.
Yep.
So, yes, I will make sure to include traffic information for both Flying Point and Montalk.
Yeah, because we're, we're assuming that's a good thing, good use, but I think we're, we may be overburdening it.
Where we, where, and the report talks about cross-access to the east and west, should we make it clear there that it does access Flying Point Road? We don't really ever mention Flying Point Road in here, but that would be our understanding, isn't it?
Yes, yeah.
The cross-access including to Flying Point Road.
Exactly.
Okay, I'll make that amendment. When they submit the final site, plan application, they do need to include a landscape plan which provides parking islands. Ideally, they should include shade trees to prevent like heat islands and to provide some thermal cooling. A stormwater pollution prevention plan also needs to be submitted to the town engineer. The applicant is proposing to install a new INA septic system in accordance with health department requirements. The site plan does need to show a dumpster and associated screening and referrals will be made and due to the scope of the project, a public hearing should be held.
I also think we need to include something about environmentally green, sustainable building.
Okay.
Anthony has a snippet of language that we've been liking.
We like. And if we're gonna, I don't know if this is all paved already, but when we're talking about street trees, if there's any way to eliminate some of the paving so that they're...
You mean along Montalk Highway?
No, within the property.
Right, that, that's one of the recommendations on the landscaping, a landscape plan which provides parking islands with shade trees.
But can we incorporate something from less, less paved that's part of being sustainable?
Do you wanna, you wanna see if there's a possibility with, with respect to pervious paving? Is that what you're looking?
Or is there, as part of the landscaping, some way to have some of the, the potential water be directed through like a swale kind of thing?
Okay.
I mean, all of this, we now know that we have to be much more careful how we build.
So, under landscaping with potential bioswells and then under drainage and stormwater, a SWIP with potential pervious pavers in accordance with the highway, the town engineer.
Yeah, I mean, it may not be doable, but it'd be great if we could at least start looking into that kind of stuff.
Okay.
We're also looking to install electric, charging stations.
Oh, yes.
In parking lots, so you might want to include that.
I think that's part of the sustainability language that we use.
It might well be, yeah.
I mean, that, that cut and paste can go everywhere.
Well, to Gloria's point, I mean, you're gonna make general comments on like the, the access landscaping, drainage and SWIP and everything, but if we can add, the bioswells comment isn't in that sustainability language, so maybe, maybe it goes into the sustainability commentary, just to add that piece and then it's.
I mean, we've got a pretty big parking lot here, but that's.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Yeah, it's a lot of cars. So, Carl, are you representing this? You want to come up?
Sure.
You have some questions?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
See you all, Carl Benacasa, eight sixty, Montalk Highway, Watermill, New York for the applicant. Teresa was kind enough to share this with us a few days ago. Just going through the list, I can tell you that we are supportive of the bulk of this report. He is very open to exploring, reducing this footprint and investigating perhaps a two-story structure. As to the parking, he is allowed under the lease to remove forty-eight seats from the restaurant, so that would accommodate the reduced parking. So, I know there was a question about that. That can lend some clarity and we'll make sure that's more clear in the final application. Truck loading, there will be two truck loading zones, one for the restaurant, one for the medical offices and we'll make sure the final application has that highlighted on it. The traffic study, we've undertaken a traffic study already in anticipation that you would be wanting this. It was done during the summer months. Do you really, do you think it's necessary to have it done fall and spring seasons as well or just during the most heavily trafficked season? Because I think if it's.
Was it June, July, August?
August.
Just August.
Just August.
That's the heaviest, yeah.
I mean, part of, you know, what can happen, and we talked about this at a couple of other locations, is that the traffic gets so backed up that you don't get a true count. But they go out for like a week at a time.
But you're, yeah, towards the, leading up to Labor Day weekend, I believe it ended just after Labor Day weekend, so the last two weeks of August. But if it's backed up, wouldn't the count be higher then? So, you'd be working.
Well, the cars aren't moving.
No, the cars aren't moving, so it doesn't, they don't count.
A free-flowing condition, which a lot of places we don't have free-flowing condition very often now anyways, but I would say, you know, if you could do either a May or, you know, September or May and October, at least, one of those two.
And if you do October with, with.
The pumpkin.
Pumpkin world just east of there.
Right, right there, yeah, you can have that problem.
Well, October would, at this point, put us another year out, right? So, if we do May, we can do this coming May.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think, again, I think May and October seem to be the most typical months.
All right, so then.
I think if you could do May, and then that three-year accident history, just to, you know, explain.
That won't be a problem, sure.
You know, one of the things.
And look at Flying Point Road.
Flying Point Road.
And, you know.
So, you want us to look at it or have I looked at it?
Well, both.
Right, I have, I've used it.
We all use it, that's the problem.
When you look at accident history in this kind of situation, similar ones is left-turn accidents, you know, it turns out and it turns in. Well, we may look and say, oh, my God, there's never been a left-turn out or a left-turn-in accident at this restaurant, you know.
I believe, I believe that we have an accident count along that stretch. I think it's very accident prone because we've had other traffic studies there.
I'm sure, I'm sure, you know, when I say there may have been, and I doubt that very much, but, you know, but I think that's the point, is to look at the types of accidents that are happening and, you know, are they turning out accidents? Yes, I, I have no doubt there's gonna be a significant number of accidents along.
And if, I don't know that we can restrict entry and exits from the highway because we have such good cross-access. It's certainly worth considering, at least.
Entrance and exits from the highway.
From the highway, yeah.
So, what I would say, that turns to our next, the next point. So, we'll do the one we did and then a May analysis as well.
I think that should be enough, yeah.
As for the access, I would just wait till we have more information from the traffic studies than taking a position as outlined in this report because as you noted, we don't, and we'll start to look at the impacts of Flying Point Road, we don't know what those impacts are going to be. those impacts are going to be. If you requ- if you limit a left turn into the lot, I understand how intuitively that might relieve traffic congestion, but then you're then forcing people to go all the way to Flying Point and wait at the light if they're trying to go in.
And I don't think there's a left turn signal at that light.
At that light, so then-
And that's, I, I have a friend who was in a very bad accident making that left.
Yeah, so I don't know, so I understand why this recommendation was in there. I would say it simply be struck and, and replaced with language, you know, uh, as guided or informed by the traffic analysis to come access shall be.
Maybe we can make a recommendation that there be a turning light, turning light at that light, at Flying Point Road, you're saying there is-
But then, well, that implicates things far beyond this.
But it's not them, I mean, it would be to the town, separate and apart.
That would be the town, in the county, I think.
That's a state, that's a state signal.
Oh, it's a state signal?
The state would make that determination, not the state signal.
So that's a-
So that's pushing out even-
Yeah.
Right, we should have a roundabout there anyway.
They have their own.
That's the roundabout.
That's not about it, that's not a bad idea.
No, it's a roundabout, it's a call for a roundabout.
It's almost shaped like a roundabout.
It's almost shaped like a roundabout, yeah. But the, uh, from your, um, plan, the building, the eight thousand square foot building, snubs almost right up against the cross-access, so it, um-
Well, we're gonna, he's fine reducing that footprint.
Teresa, he's gonna do that, okay.
Yeah, no, he was absolutely fine with that.
Good.
Okay, so just-
I think he could do a septic, from a septic perspective, I think we can do up to ten thousand square feet, which would be a five thousand square foot footprint, or we can keep it at eight and make it a four thousand, but either way, you're almost reducing or, or reducing it in half.
Right, cause you need circulation around that, you know, that's a lot of cars.
There was absolutely no pushback on that.
Yeah, okay, good.
So he's, he's very open to that.
Good.
Uh, just to clarify, so with respect to traffic, we're going to ask that they revise it to provide a three-year accident history for both Flying Point and Montauk and do additional traffic counts in the spring, preferably May, for both Montauk and Flying Point. And then with respect to the access, um, right-in, right-only access from Montauk Highway should be considered in accordance with a traffic study.
That's perfect.
Perfect, perfect, Teresa.
Well, I mean, do we wanna point to that? Limitations on access, I think, just without even acknowledging a direction you're going in.
Uh, well, but it's, you said that you wanted it hooked into the traffic study, the traffic report.
You'd like the reference to right-ins and right-outs, just taken out. Traffic, turning movement-
Best practices for access shall be considered by the traffic study.
After.
I don't wanna limit it just to left turn in, I think we should look at it more globally.
And I think, and I think we're right in knowing that right in and right out instinctively is the least dangerous.
Dangerous.
But, yeah, we could leave it there.
But in consideration of what that is over there, we don't even know if that's the case.
Right, that's why, yes, I think any final recommendation would depend on what that study determines.
So have best practices for access shall be considered with the traffic study?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, and general traffic principles if we wanna get, because there are, you know, generic studies that are done in lots of locations that will tell you rights in and rights out are better than lefts and things like that, but, um, but yeah, we could talk on that.
Anything else, Carl?
That was it, we were very, otherwise we think it's a very good report.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
So Teresa, you've got all those changes?
Uh-huh.
Okay, thank you, Carl.
Thank you so much.
I'll email you on the rise.
I appreciate it, thank you.
So, motion to accept the revised pre-submission conference for Charles.
Motion.
By, uh, motion by Gloria, second by George, all in favor. Post-extension, six in favor, one absent. Okay.
And then, uh, the last thing that I have on is just the town board referral for a change in non-conforming use. Um, I didn't pull this one up, hold on one second.
So this is number twenty-five, four twenty-four North Sea Road.
Yes, so the applicant is a spe- the property owner is currently occupied by a special trade contractor, which is an electrician. What they're trying to do now is have a new tenant in, which is a sign company.
He's already there, the sign's already up.
Yeah, uh, right, to legalize it, but there's really no planning considerations, traffic, you know, parking's gonna be the same, it's special trade contractor to special trade contractor, uh, so it, there's no real planning considerations at this moment.
So it's a change from one non-conforming use to another?
Correct.
Do we need, any change to the sign itself, it needs a tenant permit, or?
Any signage, uh?
Uh, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure about the signage, but they-
It has to comply to the sign code?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make sure that that's included, that, that, um, the, the town board, okay?
Before we go on, is it, are there mechanisms to change in non-conforming use to a conforming use, once, you know?
Hardly ever, I've, I've never seen it, it's usually one non-conforming use to the next.
What would be conforming? Residential?
Yes.
It's a horrible spot to have a house.
It's a horrible spot, yeah.
If it's conforming, you just do it, right?
Yeah.
Right, if it was a conforming use that didn't require any changes in, in parking or sanitary, it would probably just be able to get a building permit or a change in tenancy permit, right?
But their, their signs should be approved by the sign guard.
Well, we should see that.
I try to put a little levity into them.
You're going to get the application for the change of use.
Okay.
Yeah, there has to be an application with you.
Okay.
Cause it's, uh, it's not just a simple change, it's, you would get the application.
Okay. So, motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, second by Kate, all in favor. Post-extension, six in favor, one absent.
I'd still like to see conforming uses.
You won't see them, right? But it's, it's conforming, yeah.
We'd never see them if they were conforming.
You'll see them maybe when you drive by.
Hi, Claire, we're up to you, and Claire has several applications that are off. One is number seven, Ten Marine, Inc. And-
Twenty-three.
Twenty, number twenty-three.
Um, if it's okay with you, there's only two applicants here, can I take them in there order and then we'll, we'll go grab and clean up?
Yeah.
Um, so I have Verizon, which is number six.
Okay, Verizon Wireless, six sixty-five Bridgehampton, Psych Harbor Turnpike, this is the replacement of the old one, yeah.
Yep.
Mm-hmm, are you representing them? Yeah, you can come up.
Now, I've got a report to go over.
Okay.
Um, the deadline's not till, um, the twenty-sixth, however, um, if you don't have any issues, you wanna adopt it, or else we can do it in the next, say, do it.
So Claire will go through the report.
Okay, great.
Do you need, do you need one, Claire, you have one?
No, I've got one, thank you. This is a couple copies of the site, to share.
I'll share with Gloria.
Um, so essentially, this is the Verizon, what, um, sites for Verizon, not Wireless, telephone company, right?
Correct.
Yeah, that's the, that's the site, and on that site is a ninety-five foot tower existing, it's like a wooden tower, has communications on it, and their proposal is to change it to, um, a monopole, which would be, again, ninety-five feet. What's triggering your review with special exception is that the structure will be wider, it's going to be wider at the base of it, and then, so that's your review of it. So, um, I have the report, so I'm just gonna go through it. It's on a fifty-eight thousand, six hundred square foot parcel, it's improved with a utility building located in the CR two hundred zoning district and the Aqua Protection Overlay District at sixteen sixty-five Bridgehampton Psych Harbor Turnpike in Bridgehampton. A pre-submission conference was held September fourteenth, and no comments were heard during the conference nor during the provided thirty-day written comment period. This will be a full site plan, special exception application with petition, and the site plan, including engineering information, should be submitted. So zoning-wise, um, it does not need the setbacks to the property lines nor, uh, towards the person's house, I'm just gonna put that in as it, so you can see that on the GIS, um, I'm gonna put the address in so you can see the house, but this would be, the same setback would be maintained. So they're, um, maintaining, this is the house here, they're maintaining the same setback to this house, and that's, that's eliminated on the site plan. Um, what I asked also is that the other two close houses, I think they meet it, but I just want to make sure the radius is shown.
For the pulso.
For the pulso, exactly. And, um, because they're maintaining a pre-existing setback, then there's no variances required, even though it doesn't meet the standards, um, for the project. So preliminary planning issues on this, unless you have some questions, I'll just go through those, um, is that it is permitted as a continuation of a non-conforming setback with no increase to the degree of non-conformity, special exception application to be made. The Aqua Protection Overlay District, they're not saying any clearing is happening, but I want the clearing to be shown clearly on the property, on the plan, and, um, any clearing would have to conform with a fifty percent on the property, which looks like they're conforming at this point, just anecdotally looking at the area. Um, it is an unlisted action, so SECR would have to be completed prior to the site plan being deemed completes, referrals and a public hearing would be required.
Uh, I would think that what they take down needs to be revegetated in the APOD.
Okay, there's no proposal to clear anything right now, but you could definitely do-
Yeah, I mean, whatever you take down, I'm sure you have a slab underneath it and-
Yeah, there's an existing compound area right now, so we're going in the same spot. I'm, I'm sorry, Eric Hellman, Amada Law Group, six 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 Old Country Road, Garden City.
So go ahead, you're telling us the base.
Yeah, there's an existing compound area that's about four hundred and fifty square feet, we're going in the same location, so there'll be about roughly five feet of clearing around the perimeter of the compound area, and, and that's the extent of it.
Okay, and the old, am I missing it? The old tower that you're doing away with?
Yeah, that's gonna be removed, that's ninety-five feet, and the replacement monopole's going in the same location at the same height.
Same location?
Same location, yes.
Okay, so, okay.
It's just, it's larger in diameter, though.
You're swapping it out.
Yeah.
How much, how much larger?
The, um, existing monopole is about sixteen inches in diameter, uh, the replacement, at the top, it'll be about forty-eight inches, and then it tapers down to roughly sixty inches, but it's located in a very heavily wooded area, so that goes, the tree line's about seventy feet in that area, so that will help with screening.
Any, any other questions on this?
Just to reiterate the revegetation plan, that should be included based on what clearing needs to be done to install and remove the old and install the new and then revegetate.
Understood.
That's important, thanks.
Any other questions? No, Claire, any other comments from you?
No.
So I think we can adopt this.
Yeah, I think we do have it.
Okay. So, motion to adopt the pre-submission report of Verizon by George, second by-
Oh, I'm sorry, can't, don't adopt. Uh, we have two more days left in our comment period, so it has to be adopted.
Oh, okay, okay.
Have we received any comments?
Not to date, but technically, it's Monday, so, yes, you might be the last drive-by, so, we'll see if it comes in.
Sorry, Beth.
No, no, thank you. When you have the comments, there's no change right here.
Right, then, no, you can-
So if you adopt it at the next meeting, most likely?
Understood, thank you very much.
Thank you. And then other applicant, who is here?
So, um, I have a ZVA on for Loaves and Fishes, which you discussed preliminarily at the last meeting, but, uh, we were running out of time, so, um, I had, I bumped it to this meeting, um, I wrote a couple of your comments and what did you-
Six twenty-one.
Um, I wanna give it to you again, it was in the package.
Oh, yeah. Number twenty-one, Loaves and Fishes, two-two-five to Montauk Highway.
I'm doing my best, you're welcome.
Thank you.
My little crib notes work really well.
Good, when you do the, the next, you know?
This, I do this for today's meeting.
I see.
And I have little notes.
Yeah, that's good, that's good.
I don't, I don't-
I only have two copies of this plan, should I just load it out in the middle? Does that make sense, or one end or the other ones?
We'll know it.
This is the plan, um, you saw this as a preliminary, um, I'm sorry, pre-submission report. It has changed where some of this parking has been removed and put into this loc- location, so the access road has been moved closer to Butter Lane in that location, um, but, I'll put this one in front of the others.
Is there more vegetation on the north side, cause what, what, did we have-
We were talking about-
It was all been a buffer vegetation and that's, you know?
Cause that's what that neighbor was concerned.
So, a couple copies for you. So Lisa, um, what I did is just update the beginning of this as your ZVA referred. Um, so I referenced that there's been a revised map to the ZVA and the variances that are required, and I'm just including your recommendations upfront, so the zoning board is going to reform the report, and, um, so you, uh, you said cross-access shall be maintained between the two parcels. At the time of the last meeting, you said an increased setback between the parking and the north property line shall be investigated, so I included those words in there. And do you also want me to say an extensive buffer with vegetation to be established? This one, these are all my files.
Sorry, I thought he may have left that.
Do not touch my files. Any other comments that I should include?
Just trying to think.
Can I see the report? I haven't seen it.
Claire, do you have a-
Carl, have one here if you want.
So I don't, I, I'm not entirely clear, Carl, as to people exiting this lot, um, the circulation, if you could just go through that?
Sure.
Maybe we can, yeah. Yeah, just trace the circulation because you've got restaurants, cars, and you've got, uh, these two offices and then a residence. Can you just hold it up for us?
So, a lot of this parking here is actually on the adjoining parcel.
The restaurant.
The restaurant parcel. This is the parcel we're talking about, and it's these seven spots, these, I guess there's twenty-seven spots back here, and then the remainder of the park, required onsite parking is here. Cars would come in this way and out that way, and they could also come in this way. This would be a one-way, so there would be no, there would be no egress onto Montauk Highway, which was a concern.
So it's a right turn in?
It would be a right turn in.
And a left turn in.
I guess a left turn in, but of course, we can talk about that as we go through the planning process. And then, um, uh, you could right or left turn in off of butter and ingress and egress off of butter. Originally, originally, sorry, I'm, no.
Go ahead.
Originally, this access point was up, up to the north.
Yes.
Which was close to this neighbor, who is the adjacent neighbor, uh, they have withdrawn their opposition, we have worked with them on buffer. This neighbor, Mr. Levine, um, and I think council's here for him today, uh, is still in opposition. Uh, we have proposed a buffering along this row here up, if you recall, well, let's take it back, we were talking about access, egress and ingress here, this was moved away to the center area, closer to the commercial portion, still about two hundred and some odd feet from the intersection with Montauk Highway, but this is now just a, a garden, an open-spaced garden. What was originally approved, and when I say originally approved, this was, as many may recall, this was a, a site plan approved about two years ago with relief from the zoning board. There's actually twenty-one spaces along this, we reduced that to seven. Twenty-one spaces and an access point along this, we had zoning board relief for that, and-
Because of the setback?
Because there's the, the transition yard setback.
What is it now?
It's fifteen feet.
And?
What's required?
Thirty?
Fifty.
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 Significant. But the relief was granted for that last one. And we are coming in now with a reduced, from twenty-one, spanning essentially the entire northern border to seven.
And where'd you put those parking spaces? Internally there?
Internally right here. So it's about fifteen feet from the line, the property line. Then you have about a twenty-foot flagpole that is this neighbor, who is supportive. And then Mr. Levine's property is here.
Where is the, where is the house?
The house is here.
Okay.
That's the single-family residence, these are gonna be the retail slash office units.
But is there, is there a little object between the house and the parking lot?
This is just a walking path and a garden.
And then the house?
I mean, there's no relief or...
And then the house?
And then the house.
Then what? What is that?
Then this is a covered porch, then a parking area, egress-ingress parking area, and the two...
Is that sufficient width for the egress to go out into Butter Lane?
This, yes.
Yes.
These, these all, all meet with planning principles and codes and, and the like. The relief we needed is a setback relief for this structure, similar to what was already granted for the last one. Setback relief for this structure, the same, the same as what was previously granted for the last iteration, when this was a restaurant.
What is the setback?
It, it has to be twenty-five. At its minimum, it's twelve here. This has to be thirty, it's, it's twenty-seven. This has to be thirty, it's twenty-six. They're all actually minor variances, except for the transition yard relief. The other thing is the lot coverage is reduced. It was, we were seeking around twenty-two percent lot coverage. Now it's just over twenty percent, like twenty-point-four or five percent. So this proposal and the variance that you're considering is far reduced in scope, both by lot coverage and by the amount of relief required for these parking spaces. Now, the amount is the same, the actual dimensional amount, we wanted fifteen before, we're asking for fifteen now, but for seven spaces as opposed to twenty-one. We have proposed buffering that the neighbor is not, does not think is sufficient for his concerns, this neighbor. But along the parking area, two rows of eight-by-ten evergreens, and then once the parking stops, a single row of eight-by-ten evergreens, retention of an existing hedge, and sound audio-reducing fence.
Mitigation.
Mitigation.
The hedge goes along that whole back side?
The entire line here. Along with here, along the parking spaces, which was the concern, these seven spaces. That's his concern. Two rows of eight-by-ten green giants. And again, I think it's important, the zoning board is considering this in the context of the previous relief granted on-site, which again, was greater.
We don't want them to do that. This is a new application.
But they are guided by due process and, and principles of...
But Carl, we, we had several conversations about this, this is a new application, so if you're trying to sell it to them as if it's just an amended application, it isn't.
No, it's not.
Okay.
We did submit it originally as a modification to the zoning board. They said, we want this as a new application. We filed it as a new one. So they're considering as a new one.
Okay.
And that, all I'm saying is they're guided not by the previous decision on this site plan, but by the previous precedent they set, as if it was a different variance, but they're still guided by precedent and the variance is their grant.
How does this house get out of there? How do those people get out?
What do you mean, how do they get out?
The residents.
There's egress here and in the front.
And with their car, they just drive?
They're gonna have to park in the lots. The parking provided contemplates the parking required for that house.
And so they're going to have to get out the same way onto Butter Lane, right?
Yes. Oh, how do they get out of the lot? Yes, they'll get onto Butter Lane.
But they're not, they're not getting their own parking space.
They're not, well, I'm su... Could they have reserved parking? I guess, yeah, they could. Do you want me to put their names on it? We can put their names.
If I were renting it, yes.
It's not a rental, it's actually not gonna be rented. It's gonna be used by the owner and her family. Sorry?
How many bedrooms?
Six bedrooms.
The house is gonna be used by the owner and the...
Her, her, her children are gonna live there. And then, one is managing the restaurant now, so this is kind of good for...
Are they merging these properties?
No, there's no plan to merge them. But they're gonna, through various cross-access, they'll sort of operate as one, one unit.
Right, but I mean, she could sell it off, is what I'm saying. So in terms of looking down the pike, we have a, have to have a cross-access agreement that survives...
An easement.
Oh, we absolutely will.
Yeah.
Yes, it's, it's gonna be required.
Okay, so these are just footpaths to these two bill, office buildings in the front, footpaths that people walk in?
This is sidewalk and footpaths, yeah.
Okay. And we have a lot of foliage there, landscaping?
There's a whole landscaping plan that will vet, right now, you're just vetting the, these variances.
Right.
But we have a landscaping plan that includes the buffering we mentioned here, and a series of other plantings all along this, and that'll certainly be considered through the full site plan process.
What if any vegetation will satisfy that other homeowner?
So we've had extensive conversations with them. The buffering, no, it seems that no degree of buffering is gonna get them on board. They want these parking spaces removed. We don't really have a place to put them that is ideal from either the use perspective or the safety perspective, and the zoning board has been clear that they're not, that they might...
Well, you could do away with...
They don't wanna give a parking variance, as a special...
You could, you could do away with that round garden and put them...
Well, that would require the same relief, right?
No, then you'd be quite far away from, from the back.
Well, you need an access point here, so you'd have to make up for lost spots. And then you'd have a parking lot, I think, closer to the, to the home.
Yes, to this house. To the house on...
You know, when we go through the site plan process, certainly those concerns can be raised. We won't necessarily need relief for those, so I, I know that the goal is to keep this as much like a house as possible, and that's kind of how this was designed. You know, you don't, this, as much as this is a house in a sea of parking, this was designed to sort of mitigate the fact that this is a house in a sea of parking, and in line with previous reliefs granted on this site, and in factually, in a reduced way.
So we have residential, this is HB or VB?
HO.
HC.
Oh, H.
HC?
HO.
HO.
HO. And so that residence is what, special exception or...
No, it's permitted.
It's permitted? No affordable housing in it at all?
Not required.
Not required.
That was the original plan.
With the restaurant.
The restaurant and the affordable upstairs.
So these are going to be...
This is, oh, and this is a far reduced septic. We're actually, before, we'd have to bring credits on, we're compliant with septic.
Yeah, because that was the problem with the other thing.
Because of the restaurant.
Couldn't get health, the health department approval. So these are small buildings?
Well, without, without bringing on credits, that's why.
Now, the homeowner that, you said one homeowner is okay.
Yes. This homeowner here is okay. You know, through extended discussions, we have a signed agreement. We're going to put a specific buffering in here. We're gonna, and this'll all come before you, but the type of lighting is gonna be, you know, certainly dark skies compliant, low-lit lighting. There's gonna be a maintenance covenant to maintain that buffering in perpetuity. And as a result, their opposition to the variance was withdrawn.
Okay.
This is the adjoining neighbor. Now, if you recall, this neighbor, although proximity is, is close, because there's this flags, flagpole, they didn't have to be notified, if you remember. Now, we have been voluntarily notifying them because clearly they, you know, the, the, the goals of, the overarching goals of the code would think that someone like this should be notified. So we've been notifying them.
And, and they're upset about those seven parking spaces?
These seven, that's correct.
And where is their house, kind of?
Right there.
Okay.
There's a pool house here, and their house is here. There's a row, but there's an existing row of buffering here and a fence on both sides.
Is the, the pool house, it, it's hard...
Sure.
Where is the fence?
I'm going off of the, but there's a, the house is up towards the front, the main dwelling.
Okay, thank you.
Where this is adjacent to this, the garden area. And then there's a pool house here.
And that gray thing, is that the pool?
No, that's just some detail, right?
Yeah, that's some detail.
Okay.
This isn't a, so, this isn't a survey of that yard.
Okay.
So we're just going on our surveyors.
Okay.
But there is a pool somewhere between pool house and...
Do we have an aerial of it? Yeah, you can see, yeah, you were right there.
Oh, I know, but let me go to the GIS, just one second. 'Cause then you can zoom, you can see what the neighbors...
That's stockade fences, Carl?
I've not, I believe so.
Solid?
Yes, they're solid, yes.
So there's a long flag to get to a little house in the back, and then the, the immediate neighbor who has children and...
There's a road, there's a howl, there's a driveway in between.
There's a driveway in between.
Yes.
And it looks like there's a hedge and boot side of that driveway, hedge?
Yes, hedge and fence on both sides. And then, and then the buffering we'll put on our side as well.
And where is the park, the seven parking spaces, Claire, could you just show it?
Roughly, they're just...
They're gonna be on the side, right there.
Probably, if you look where the pool house is, they actually start just to the left of the pool house and go mostly two...
Where the cruise, where the cruise is right?
Two or three of the sites are actually adjacent to, or are beyond their property. Two or three of the par... If you see, two or three of them are actually, this is, this is his property line. Two or three are actually beyond it. So it's really four and a half.
Okay, so you, you basically, you've got somebody else's driveway that's buffered, and then there's a buffer on the property, Loaves and Fishes property.
We'll put a, a significant...
They'll put a double row of, of evergreen giants and a fence.
Double row of green giants, a fence and a hedge.
Have we talked about cross-access here?
Yes, so cross-access shall be maintained between the two properties, is what you had the comment for.
And what, and what about to the east?
And then propose to the east.
And where did we propose it?
It's that's a general cross-access from the past, because we don't know where the connection will be to... So this, this site is at one with the small office in the front, if you remember, for the contractor. So most likely, it'll be in this location.
The cross-access.
Yeah.
Well, that's going with the little, that's a construction design company now.
Correct, right now it is, yeah.
With a very illegal sign.
That used to be, and then wasn't, that would get you all the way to Newman Village, which was always the goal, right?
Yeah.
And then you have cross-access from Newman Village to Butter.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would, that would be good, yeah. There, also, we just received yesterday secret coordination from the zoning board appeals. Do you want the, the agency?
Absolutely.
So what I'm gonna say is the cross-access shall be maintained between the two parcels, and general cross-access to the east, right?
Yeah.
And do you still wanna say the increased setback should be investigated, that's to you? Or you, do you wanna just say there should be an extensive buffer between the two properties?
I think so.
Okay.
An extensive planted buffer, you're talking about.
Vegetated.
Vegetated, vegetated buffer, yeah.
Green.
Green.
Evergreen, yeah.
Evergreen.
Yeah, because the, what was shown before is, you know, bare trees in the winter.
And then I would say the plan for cross-agency.
And we will do a maintenance covenant on that, too.
Yeah.
Okay, so there'll be the three points for the, the ZVA refer.
What were they again, Claire, I'm sorry?
I'll write it up for you. But general access shall be maintained between the two parcels and, sorry, cross-access, and then general to the east.
Okay.
An extensive buffer to be maintained between the parking and the north property line, including evergreens.
An extensive evergreen buffer.
Evergreen, planted evergreen buffer.
And maybe a fence if they need it.
We're, we're doing the, the fence, we're doing that, the hedge, whether you guys want it or not. We're gonna do the fencing, the hedge, and the two evergreens.
Okay, so I'll put fencing in there, too. And the planning board requests lead agency.
Yeah.
Free consideration.
Okay. So, we're gonna adopt this? Motion? Motion by Kate, second by Gloria, all in favor?
Hi.
All in favor, one absent, thank you, Carl.
Thank you, thank you very much. Good to see you all.
Good to see you.
I'll see you tonight.
Oh, you're on tonight? Oh, yes.
Make sure you don't take Claire's file.
Yeah, I know, don't go near them, don't even look.
Claire, one, one forty-four Mariner.
Yeah, we can do that.
So number twenty-two. What happened to Lester Ellison?
We can, we can go back, if stuff to do, if you're right here, we can do this.
Go ahead.
So this one is, I'm gonna bring up the aerial on this one. Ten fifty-four Montauk Highway. It's, used to be the Ethan Allen.
Oh, yes.
So they are going to lease this to a vet. And when a vet, a vet requires a fifty-foot setback from any property line. The building is about thirty-seven feet from the front property line, which is really not an impact. And it's about twelve feet, something, and ten feet from the east property line. But that's the setback to the industrial, the commercial use to the north. So I don't think there's any planning implications, but just have a little report here for you to consider.
So it's gonna be a veterinarian?
Vet use, yeah, pretty straightforward, I thought. The only thing is, I say that I actually think it's minor, because there's commercial uses adjacent. Really, I think the purpose of that is, so there's not a nuisance. You don't have dogs barking at night, and somebody's neighbors, that's why the fifty feet, I think. But this seems like an appropriate use for the, the property.
And the property to the east, is that the car place?
Uh, the property to the east. There is a, is a black one, is that? I don't know if the...
No, the one on, the one on Montauk Highway.
The one, oh, that's a landscape, this is.
I mean, it's, it's all commercials.
Yeah, it's creative landscaping or something.
Oh, yes, creative, yes.
This one's creative landscaping, this is Riverhead Building Supply, and then this is some kind of industrial, commercial use there. So I don't think there's any impact for them using the building.
What's behind the building?
This is a special J contractor use, and this is a cell tower, like, new approved, a hundred-foot tall.
And so are there special requirements for veterinarian facility?
There are, actually, on the back page. So the adjacent properties shall be adequately protected from noise, odor, and, and slightly appearance. We'll do this during your site plan, special exception review. And here is the standard. All building structures and accessory use areas shall be fifty feet from any property line. And then C is, you know, more specific to that use. I don't like to read that one.
No. So, and the parking is in the rear?
Yeah, and so there's no change in parking with the use. It's an office use, it was a retail use, it would be the same parking for the building.
It's a very nice building, and we're not going to change it architecturally.
I don't know if there's any of a plan to do that, at this point, so. So I said it was minor nature, I think the intention is to prevent the nuisance. Since it's commercial all around, I think the board has no issues, no planning issues? Does that sound fine?
Fine, so, I never like to say no planning issues, I mean, finds the property appropriate?
For the vet use?
Okay, so, motion to...
I would say after, after a special exception review, pending a special exception, okay. Okay.
Okay, motion to adopt?
Motion.
By Gloria, and second by Claire, all in favor? Close extension, six in favor, one absent.
Okay, let's go back.
Lester Ellison, two forty-one Norris.
Because again, this is just before the action deadline, and the action deadline's next meeting.
This is the one by the cemetery?
This is the one by the cemetery, yes. Do you all want your own plans? I've got lots.
We can share, we have a lot.
I've got a lot.
There's an existing house that's gone down.
Yeah, so this is on Norris Lane, it's, it has an existing house on the property, and the proposal is for... Yeah, so this is on Norris Lane, it's, um, it's, has an existing house on the property and the proposal is for a three-lot subdivision with two lots in the rear. Um, it is in the New York State archeologically sensitive area, so we'll do a phase one B. And it conforms with the CR forty zoning district, uh, what it doesn't conform to is in the zone typically, um, you do one and a half times the lot area, four flag, flag lots, the planning board has in the past waived that, if they're large lots, I guess. Uh, it's not conducive to a planned residential development, cause it's not adjacent to any open space, um, I can show you on the aerial.
Claire, just one thing, in your park, in your discussion on park requirement?
Uh-huh.
You have, you made, you mentioned East Quav?
Oh.
I know you're probably missing East Quav.
Yeah. I'm a cuttaster, so you know.
Bridgehampton.
Yes, I'm gonna put Bridgehampton in there, um. Two forty-one Norris, I think. So this is the property, uh, and then you can see that, uh, as Jackie pointed out, the cemetery is to the south here, um. So it is a type two action, I'm sorry, on page two, um, it doesn't, um, warrants having a cluster or a planned residential development, cause it's not adjacent to any open space or potential for open space, if cluster be not an open space achieved, would be null and voidable. And three, the site is currently developed for the simply under residence. Uh, so it's a minor review, three lots, that's what it is with no roads, um, conforms with the comp plans, cause it needs zoning and conform, has to conform with the health department, the park fee would be, uh, based upon assessment for the two-lot area, um, in this case, it's not a flat fee. And a public hearing was held on August twenty-fourth, uh, with no public comments and, uh, was closed with a ten-day written comment period and no public comments were received during the process.
How come, what's the assessment, how come it's not a flat fee?
Um, because over two lots is, uh, it's two or less is a flat fee.
Okay.
So if this was a vacant two-lot subdivision, there would be twenty-five hundred and twenty-five hundred, but beyond that, when it goes over two lots, it's assessed.
Cause there's a falling down little house on the front, I guess they're going to remove that, right?
Probably in the future, yeah, exactly.
Yeah.
Um, I'm sorry, I didn't attach the, um, I knew I forgot something, which is the referrals, but I have them in, uh, I have them pulled up, so let me just read them to you. Uh, this is from the fire dis, oh, sorry, fire marshal, August twenty-fourth. Uh, proposed lots are accessible via Norris Lane with two, uh, flag lots, street addresses, driveway shall comply and they will require the installation of a fire hydrant, there's no fire hydrant except of quite a big distance, fifteen hundred feet to the south, so they will require that. Um, the fire district actually said there was no, um, recommendations or requests at this time.
There's a hydrant right on Narrow Lane.
I looked it up, cause I was interested myself, and I, you can put the fire hydrants on, as a layer up here.
But it doesn't show, right?
It's, the nearest one that I see is to the south here, down here, so that's what they're talking about, there's no.
Nothing up there?
Nothing up here.
Even though it indicates there is?
Yeah.
And a survey?
On the survey.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we're not showing it, so it's just a clarification, if there is one.
I'll drive, I'll drive by and look.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Um, so no comments from the engineering division yet, um, of course, there'll be a common driveway requirement, and no comments from conservation yet. Um, landmarks, I'll read those. They say the three-lot subdivision is of no concern relative to historic preservation values, a preliminary review shows a single residence house with accessor eighteen forty, evidence of historic real estate maps, architectural tie, AKA our survey suggests circa nineteen hundred built. No demolition prospect indicates in referral information, and then just said the owner is Lester Ellison, uh, from nineteen sixteen to twenty twenty-three.
Well, it.
If he's that old, that's pretty old.
It's very old.
But if, if that, I think what I'm hearing is that it's, the building is historic, so should.
Yeah.
So that should be in our notes.
Yes, the building is at least nine hundred, nineteen hundred, according to the, okay, good, let's put that as a requirement, as a.
So, they're, they're gonna have to fix the falling down house, maybe.
I don't know, it's in very bad.
Or, or get permission to demolish it.
Yeah.
Consular preservation? As the common.
Refer to the historic district, yeah.
Refer to the historic district.
Right.
Okay, and then I did have health department's, uh, comments, they have not received an application yet and they'll be required, of course. So those are the referrals received to date, um, do you wanna go for the recommendations? Yeah, I have these listed up here. Um, so lots two and three shall share a common driveway, do you think it makes sense to have, um, three common driv, I mean, this other lot hook up to the common driveway?
Well, the, the way that the gravel driveway is shown here, it's crossing the common dri, it's crossing one of the two leg lots, so it.
They should all use it.
Okay. I'm gonna say one, two, and three. And then I'll eliminate number two, lot area of flags are less than one and a half times lot area. So it is either do that or they'll propose a road, and I don't think that makes any sense here, so, um, planning boards then will, will have to raver, okay. So the New York State Archaeological Sales Sensitive Area, they'll require a phase one B. Um, clearing for even future house may require New York State D E C approval due to the D E C documented summer occurrence of northern long-eared bats. Um, so that may require a special incidental permit to cut trees outside of December first and February twenty-eighth. Um, I'm gonna say the building, uh, is historic for at least nineteen hundred and infernal, for any activity shall be maintained by landmarks board. Compliance with the Department of Fire Prevention comments regarding driveway requirements and the new fire hydrants, if applicable, right? I'm just gonna mention the plan indicates a.
Plan indicates a hydrant on Narrow Lane, corner of Narrow Lane.
Yeah.
And then compliance with any future requirements if it's unengineered, final application with health departments and the final stage.
So the archaeological review is one A and B, you have just one B?
Uh, one A is that they do that research that says it's, it's a historic district anyways, so it, it doesn't matter, the B is the investigation.
They're gonna have to do. Right, okay.
Um, you can adopt it now, or you can wait and see if there's any referrals gonna come back, um, you're outside the, um.
That's a board field, one of.
You said the common.
It's a pre-African report, we can adopt it.
No, there's the common, actually, in this case, uh, we just haven't had all the referrals come back, which I like to get them all back, you know, from the conservation board or, or such.
Do you wanna wait?
We can wait, so then, and then we'll fill them in and just update the report.
So no action? So no action?
I think you had a respect for the other boards, we should wait.
I'll check the hydrant.
Yeah, exactly, yeah, no, it's good. It's me, so no action, but it'll be ready for adoption from the state. My next one is already a T, um, this is the one, uh, that was yet given to review.
Number ten.
Um, I did update this a little bit, so I'll give you the next, the fresh version. Hello.
Number ten.
This is the one, um, in Hampton Bays, which is the three buildings.
Oh, the three buildings.
Three nine thousand square, or twenty-nine thousand square feet, so they need a variance from fifteen thousand square feet.
Was this the one that Liz was representing?
Yeah, so, um, I think what we just, what your comments were, were that the appearance of the front building was a little bit, needed some context, some help, assistance.
She wanted a recommendation from us and you said that what was sent was an example of, uh, an architectural, a building that was, um.
It's the office building.
Office building.
Colin, it was Dr. Ariola's office building, it's very residential in appearance.
Residential looking, right.
It's a big building, I think it's more than five thousand square feet, but it's got the nice residential.
Right, better, better than that.
Right, so they could do something that, like more of a colonial type of building or something.
So we should make a reference to that?
Yeah, I can do that.
And, and we, we need that, that green.
The green statement, did I not put it in?
Uh, it's not.
Yes.
You just, you, you just wanna make me having to keep saying add the green.
Yes, I do.
So sustainability and gr- green and sustainability.
Yes, I drove by there the other day and we had talked about, even though it's not required to maintain some of the natural buffer along the roadside and I really think it makes sense, just looking at the, that corridor.
Mm-hmm.
So, I guess we can't require it, but she seemed open to it when we discussed it.
Yes, you know. Yes, you did say that, you know, for some reason, all my notes.
Can you pull it up, Claire?
It's.
You don't have your notes?
Inspired, um, yes, I can pull it up, let me, let's see. So this is the aerial, do you want me to pull it up on the G I S?
Sure. And are we gonna break in a little bit just to discuss with Janice, because she has to go?
Yes, and when, when she comes up.
Okay, and then we'll come back to this.
Yeah, we can definitely come back to this.
Yeah, she sent Kristen to get Janice.
Yeah.
I didn't realize it was four o'clock, so. Oh, that doesn't make any sense. Yeah, so you want me, uh, after the buffer, I'm gonna add, um, the natural vegetation, the thoughts should be retained, um.
Yeah, if you look at the stop and shop, um, kind of mimicking that would be nice, just to maintain the natural woodland along that corridor.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we see.
And again, like, with the stop and shop, when I brought it up, we talked about that that's A P O D, right? Um, and that's what, what, the reason why that buffer was maintained, but it is a nice design element to, uh, soften the industrial uses along there.
So I'm gonna say, look at the sites for one ninety-four west Montauk Highway, okay.
Commercial uses.
That's a nice term, soften, the, um, that, that corridor there, as you drive, it still feel, has that nice sort of open feel to it until you come a little bit east into Hampton Bays, so I agree with Kate, one hundred percent, if we can, and that would be fantastic.
So Claire, my comment about this is that, um, this is a very intensive use.
Mm-hmm.
For this property, I mean, there are three buildings, it totals twenty-nine thousand square feet.
Mm-hmm.
When that was mentioned to the applicant, the applicant said, well, we could subdivide it into three lots and still get the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
So how, how do we think about that, how do we deal with that?
Well, that's, I think, their argument to the zoning board appeals, if they're gonna make that argument, I don't think you need to address that. Um, you say the planning board does not support the variances, you could additional, say additional language, that this is a very intensive use of one piece of property.
Ten thousand, twelve thousand, seven thousand. That's a lot of square footage. I mean, do we have a, um, a site plan?
Yes. We do have a site plan.
And there'll be a substantial variance above fifteen thousand, right?
Yes.
Yeah, fifteen, fourteen thousand square feet. Yes, almost double.
I mean, some kind of campus style, as you were saying, Jackie, would work really nicely if you have that buffer along the road, so you're, you're getting a, a curb cut in there.
Yeah.
But from the roadside, it's really insulated, and then you get in there and you could keep some of the natural vegetation that's in there by,
Exactly.
you know, having those landbakes in the parking and smaller buildings throughout.
Having the buildings, right.
What does, um, the Hampton atrium look like from above, just to think about other sections of that.
Yeah, of the.
Area.
Go back, um, traveling through Hampton Bays.
No traffic.
So much easier, so the, the atrium has this advantage of having this, you know, open space.
Corner, right.
Right.
Um, so you know it's tucked away, and they have a buffer here before the parking starts, um, so it's a very functional place, you know.
But they've got, what, four buildings?
Offices.
Four buildings on the same amount of, uh, this is three acres.
Mm-hmm.
I think that looks a lot bigger, no?
This is a big piece of property, um, and it's all condoed at this point. The common space is four acres, and then there's even additional space, condos.
But that type of, I guess as an example, that type of entry and architecture to keep, to soften the commercial use
Yeah. Campus style.
in that area, I think is important.
So should I mention this one also?
I actually thought that was very, uh, industrial looking, the one time I was in there.
Yeah, I mean, it, from the roadside, it's not, so if, if they were to still get more of a commercial, industrial feeling on the inside, at least you could insulate it from the road so that when you're driving through Hampton Bays, it's not just like, there was once woodland here and now it's, you know, just an industrial park or something.
Yeah, that's, the, the design in there is very dated.
I mean, how much parking do those three buildings need, it's, it seems like they're gonna pave everything.
Yeah, they'll have to clear cut it, you know.
Oh, yeah.
Right.
So, what, this is our pre-submission conference report, so do we want to say here that we don't support uh, twenty-nine thousand square feet of three buildings on this parcel, on a three acre parcel?
Yeah, it's, it's the, it's the last sentence of number two, um, I can break, break it out, it should be number three or first sentence if you want, the first item.
First, it should be the first, I think.
Okay, and then I'm going to elaborate on that and say that the planning board finds it's an intensive use of the site, um, and that the variances are quest, are substantial.
Substantial, double, you know, fifteen thousand square feet, and they want twenty-nine, so it's just double.
Yeah. Okay. So that's gonna be number one, and then number two is just gonna talk about, you know, the details of the size of the building.
Yeah. Yeah.
And then I'm gonna mention, um.
Hi, Janice, we're almost ready.
And about your natural vegetation buffer in the front shall be retained, uh, similarly to, I'll refer to the McDonald's site and to the atrium.
Okay.
Um, and then I'm gonna suggest that one site, forty-seven west Montauk, east Montauk.
Right, interested in a campus style, yeah, design.
As a design, yeah.
Don't forget the sustainability.
Green, sustainability.
And I've got green sustainability.
Right.
Do you wanna adopt this in the, for the Janice, as the planning discussion?
Did we, did we talk about this enough? Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so a motion to adopt it?
Motion.
By Gloria, and second by Kate, all in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, extension, six in favor, one absent.
Thank you.
Okay, Janice.
Hi.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having me. How you doing, everyone?
Planning board discussion.
I didn't know what to call it, so.
No, no.
Well, we were talking at a recent agenda meeting and thought this is, um, probably a good way to just get the lines of communication open where instead of just adopting blind resolutions and the tab board may or may not have even known what the issue is. We have an active dialogue, it's space on the agenda for you to say, can you look into this or that, and ideally, it would inform, like, a legislative agenda and it's not all over the map, so we can do this sort of, in a way that's, you know, look at this, look at that, look at this, look at that, isn't gonna work either. But if we systematically, systematically talk about, because of course, your role is not just to react to things, it's to look forward and say, how can we fit in these goals in long range, uh, realm? And how can that? And how can that synergize with the legislative body here?
So we have a few things, yeah, how much of your time do we have?
As much time as you have, I think you have public hearings also.
Yeah, we have, right, but we wanna, because we have about three things that we, that are.
Yeah, the one was the, uh, APOD, I guess there was the, I guess it's, there's a couple of things related to that, but you wanted the administrative process, right?
The APOD.
But reject, but a revegetation.
The revegetation, yeah, the vegetation we still want.
That's in our radar, so yeah, so we wanna re-vedge, uh, site disturbance plan. So ultimately, see, the thing is this, we want people to come in with a site disturbance plan before they clear the property. That's the goal, and maybe that's a way to, you know, incentivize people because it's an administrative process that's easier, and, because I don't like to administratively sort of sanction violations. So when someone already does it, I think then they should come to you. But if they are being proactive and saying, here's how I wanna clear my property, haven't brought out the bulldozers, then we can go through an administrator, so I like to almost have it.
Except that, we want it, we would like to get it off our agenda because we have a lot of them. Well, it takes up a lot of time and we have very heavy agendas, so.
We can try it like that, it's just that, uh, you know, that's fine. And because, well, you know, the penalties will be through, you know, typically, they don't even make it through the justice court system. They just kinda come to you to.
Yeah, to, with a revenge plan, but.
Re-vedge it, you know.
But we also don't think the, the, the burden of what they have to do is not strong enough because they're cutting down old, old woods and they're putting in sticks.
Exactly, and ruining an entire habitat potentially, so.
I think you had some other legislation you were thinking about, Janice, that maybe we could tie in here, what was that?
Well, that was sort of an expansion of the clearing areas, which we did not have, um, any takers really at the town board law, like a full majority of. Maybe things will change in the next legislature.
Expansion of areas where clearing restrictions would be implemented.
Yeah, and we had Marty Che do a real comprehensive review of like what's left. And, you know, because if you just blindly say like, oh, this whole area right here, you know, it doesn't make sense because there's a lot of things that have already been cleared, so we do have that analysis and maybe I can come back at a different session and show it to you, so that may inform that. But I agree, we, for now, we could just do, um, revegetation, site disturbance plans administratively.
You don't have Jeff to give it to.
Don't worry, we'll find another plan.
You'll find some money?
Yes.
Maybe Kristen.
Okay, so that's one.
So that's one, and the next one was, um.
I think energy overlay or related to the best, and then I guess.
Craig, why don't you speak to that?
Well, it just seems that we react to, um, you know, like the best situation, right? We're, we're reacting always and trying to fit things into the application as opposed to being proactive and saying, hey, we have an overlay, uh, uh, an overlay just there, an energy overlay here, where we have targeted certain, you know, parcels or areas that we think would be appropriate for energy, energy usage. And I know oftentimes it's targets of opportunity, right, with, um, PSCG and connectivity and the like. But if, if we, you know, um, find some kind of consensus and some kind of model out where you build it into the industrial, the light industrial zones, it may give them more incentive to say, hey, guess what, if we put a little infrastructure work here, we could have an application probably go through a lot easier than these, you know, prolonged battles that we're seeing now.
Sure, so, uh, I don't know how many people read the actual secret behind the best stuff, but it was talking about, you know, how it was really context specific. And it was, there's opportunity areas and there were avoidance areas and, and every area was to stand on its own merit and you to be able to say, in the context of this area, this makes sense or doesn't make sense. And, you know, it has to be sized accordingly, et cetera. And obviously, that was a failure on our part for not, you know, being able to give you more tools to be able to say arguably how that would work, you know, it was sort of left to your discretion to some degree and that was a mistake. So, uh, what we're trying to do now is work with Suffolk County, other east end towns, actually several other towns on, in Suffolk County, are all facing the same problem. We all know we need renewable energy and we know that battery storage stabilizes the grid and allows for the renewable energy to actually have a meaningful place in our, uh, energy consumption. But, you know, we heard everyone say we don't want it in residential areas, um, except for the fact that that's where they need it, so how's that work? I mean, I'm not necessarily an energy expert, so the county's gonna pull in the energy experts, PSCG, all the towns. We're in a sort of form of cooperative way of looking at it and pull you all in too because I think you have a place there and mentioned it to them that it's very important that the boards have what they need to be able to hold something up against the criteria. The only concern is that when you say like, uh, uh, opportunity area, which we did do that, we said, these are opportunity areas, you're located near the grid, you're located blah, 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 you know, you had these criteria in there. But then what came out of it, when someone came to propose something, no one liked. So like, you know, that's a problem, because then you can be the best opportunity in the whole world and then when it finally filters down into a parcel, whoever lives next door to that parcel.
Not gonna like it.
Doesn't agree that it's a good parcel. So you can target, we tried to do a broad brush, equal playing field, not just saying only these two guys wanting, could do it because then we're not being fair, right? So it's a little tricky, but I agree with you that there should be more standards, more basis. And, and a lot of that master plan has to do with PSEG and LIPA's master plan, and you know.
And how is that, what's happening with them, you know, given this?
Right, so we are looping them into the whole conversation, I think we need to loop everyone, you know, you all in and just sort of work out, you know, what are the standards? And, and it does hinge on what safety standards are, because no one was knowledgeable that these were going to be, you know, uh, such a potential for fire. And we were assured by NYSERDA this was, you know, benign, no problem, you know, but they're the energy resource, you know, they're the development agency.
I know, but New York, New York State can.
If you can't believe them, who can you believe? The research authority is the ones that we should not listen to. So anyway, I just think I agree with you is what I'm trying to say, and I do think we need some kinda, if not energy overlay, just a better sense of like.
Where?
Where the electrons are coming from, where they're stored, how they go out, and how this all happens in a way that doesn't compromise anyone.
And the technology's changing, you know, so that dovetails with what's happening with the moratorium. That was our question.
Oh, yeah, so that's what I'm saying, so we're trying to.
Because wasn't there going to be, I know our recommendation was to issue an RFP for a consultant to help us, I don't know if that made the town board.
Sure, I mean, I've reached out to consultants, uh, the RFP, you know, we can issue an RFP, no problem, but they, uh, we were just trying to get like, you know, simple, three quotes from three consultants instead of a whole RFP process, I mean, we could do that too, um.
For the moratorium.
For the moratorium, but in the meantime, what we have done is sort of join forces with Town of Huntington, Town of Riverhead, Southhold, and through the county, because they offer planning services, have them as sort of uh, um, position where they can see the, the common threads between all of us and make a more unified code that we can all, you know, custom tailor to our circumstances, because we're not, you know, South.
The county.
But the county can act as sort of the integrating force there, so, and that is what we've been working on for now.
But you're not, we're not planning on issuing an RFP at this point?
I don't have an RFP prepared, but I have reached out to several consultants.
Okay, Chris, I'm getting, we have wanted to be involved in any kind of, you know, putting the scope of work together or whatever, but if you're working with people, I'm just.
Well, that's what we're working with the county to kinda create the scope, and I could bring you a draft scope from that working group that you can comment on and, you know, make sure, and, and involving the county also will give us more leverage when we say, can we have an extension on our moratorium, because we're working with you, right?
We're two months into it.
You're already two months in.
But it's not like we haven't, you know, been doing anything. I know it doesn't sound like it, because we're not running around saying everything, but I've been in many, many meetings about what to do, how to do it.
Oh, I'd like to see the scope.
And I mean, one of my initial questions when we really started getting into the application is, it seems like really little ones are in your house and then everything else. Just saying, you know. In, in terms of size of.
Six hundred kilowatt and above, yeah.
Was this initially envisaged, like, you know, utility scale battery storage? Because that six hundred kilowatt seemed like, some things we talked about earlier, the medical office and behind a diner, seems as, hey, that's perfect for putting in a, a battery storage unit to manage energy. But you went from six hundred kilo, kilowatts to, you know, a hundred, a hundred megawatts.
I mean, no one knew that someone was gonna, you know, of course, we get caught out there if you don't put a limit on something, and that's our lesson here.
We get driven by the applicants.
You know, we just had six hundred and above, thinking like, oh, that's, because who knew someone was gonna ask for a hundred megawatt? Well, we should've known, well, we didn't realize that that kind of scale was even something someone was gonna propose. At the same time, what is a hundred megawatts when you're talking about electrons?
I, I've asked a question of quite a few smart people and I have not been able to get an answer that I understand.
Well, we could, like, we talked about that, you know, the vitamin example, like, there's a million whatever in a vitamin IU of probiotic, let's say, and they're that big, so the density measurement is not the same as you used to because we're talking about energy, electrons. At the same time, of course, we don't wanna plan any kind of like bomb anywhere that's gonna go off and destroy everything. That's, that was never the point, so we don't want, we heard loud and clear that people do not want megawatt scale in a residential area, got it, but then what is the next tier down? And where does that cap go?
So what are the suggestions, that, to piggyback on what Craig was saying, sorry, is that, you know, so the two applications that I've so far have cited because they were in close proximity to PSCG tran- to PSCG transfer station.
That's right.
We're saying, can this go the other way around? Can we identify a half dozen sites based on previously disturbed sites, you know, in industrial zoning places where it's not in close proximity? And that, and if LIPA really wants to have these, um, you know, these batteries, battery storage facilities to support the grid, so they don't have to expand their generation and the grid, then maybe they invest the money into bringing a, you know, a, a station closer to to the sites we've located. So we, we kinda flip flop to where we think about it, instead of depending what LIPA has, we're saying, here's a site, you bring your stuff here so we can hook up.
Possibly, or, or what, when we, we did bring PSCG in and out and questioned them, like, how, how do you do this? And they said, you know, there has to be a whole interconnection agreement in process, so like, we kind of are, and I, and I really appreciate Town of Huntington being like, well, why are we even letting anyone make an application until that agreement is in place?
Yes.
That's, you know.
The PSCG went out there and.
So, but, you know, I get the point that somebody's caught in the middle between like, well, I don't know if I wanna expend all this time and effort and money to get that interconnect agreement if the town's not gonna approve it. So it's a little tricky there, so, you know, I would not wanna be in that position, but at the same time, I, there is a lot of, uh, merit to pulling PSCG and LIPA into this and being like, what are you looking for? So we know what people, you know, so we're not, this isn't the gold rush here, like, this shouldn't be speculative, it should be, we really know we need it because this neighborhood and that and whatever is producing it. But we really like the idea of like a super, a supermarket, being able to have like battery backup so that the lights can stay on and the food could stay refrigerated and, you know, that's a good, that's a much smaller.
And that's, that's where the six hundred kilowatt limit made sense, right?
So, you know, I mean, it's, it's a known fact that LIPA and PSCG have not invested in the east end of Long Island for years and years and years. And with this project, um, I think the town or even the county has an opportunity to, with strength, say, you know, you're gonna be the carrier or the delivery system, we need X, Y, Z. But that also means the town looking at available sites where we want to have the, uh, interconnection done. So that there's more, uh, direction from the town as opposed to being, having the tail wag the dog.
Sure, and look at, you know, I mean, it used to be that water was the limiting resource and now we're seeing, you know, traffic flow and energy as limiting resources. Um, you know, looking at overall the consumption and how, you know, when I, when you look at a profit and loss statement, you're not just looking at, you know, what more you can spend, or, sorry, what more you can bring in, it's what you might be doing on curbing spending too. So I think, you know, consideration should be put into what are we, what are the needs now? What could they be in the future and what are other ways that we can do to, you know, take off and curb the spend?
Right, and I wanna bring our, our climate action plan draft to you to review. And that has a lot of goals and objectives, um, in the energy sector that should be considered.
Yeah, and look at, you know, if we're saying a simple way that we don't want these really large scale energy storage banks, we can just say, okay, you're looking at a centralized system, could we decentralize it, right? With putting something in a grocery store or a certain level of size, square footage building has to also include a, you know, battery storage bank or something like that.
So, yes, I love that, and I think that's important.
So then we're saying, fine, you can have a big building, but you're also providing a community benefit.
Well, that's the idea between like big buildings having to account for their own energy, right, and offsetting it.
But we're, we're telling them to use geothermal and that's all electric.
Sure, um, we are telling them that, you want?
Well, that's, that's, our code is basically saying that your hers rating, as you, your house gets bigger, you have to have your, your house much more energy efficient and those larger houses are being forced to use geothermal.
Well, more solar than geothermal though, right?
That's.
Uh, we can do some research on that to see if that's true, but, um, yeah, so.
I mean, I'm looking for research now, there was a big article about what Vermont is doing in terms of battery storage and they want to hook every household up to it and then control it, it's a very interesting system. I'll find it and send it to everybody.
I, I read, I read.
Did you read it?
Yes, there's, the, the utility wants to put batteries in everybody's house that they will pay for and they will control.
Yeah.
So that.
Yeah, it's like peak shaving, so that.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And instead of building, they, they've done the, the P and L on it and they said that that's, will be cheaper than building infrastructure to support undergrounding because of weather and supporting the additional electricity needed for the community, that it's gonna be cheaper to put batteries in everybody's house.
How's that gonna go? You don't want a battery in your house, what are you gonna do?
Well, there was some actual photograph, the Tesla.
It sounds well and good, and then there's people who are gonna say, I don't want a battery in my house.
I mean, it's, this utility has, I think, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand homes, so it's not, it's, it's small compared to Long Island.
Well, even just like offsetting like thermal, like you're losing heat all the time, right? Like, everything is always losing heat, and if you can somehow recapture all that heat, so first of all, greenhouse gas issues, second of all, thermal runway, you end up in a bad situation with a dried out planet. So you may wanna figure out like how to capture heat and re, like the combined heat and power or other sources of ways of reusing energy that otherwise is being wasted, it's being wasted.
It builds a mu- much more energy, energy efficient building to start with.
Sure, and of course, but you have a lot of stuff that's there already, so how do you, the new thing is easy, it's the older.
And there's a lot of it here.
There's a lot.
Our immediate challenge is to give them the best system.
Yeah, yeah.
So, yeah, and so. In the meantime, I mean, we kinda have a scope, right? We kinda know what the issues were from all public testimony, number one thing being safety. Um, where, you know, it's easy to say, put it in over there in the industrial zones, but the problem is, there's not that many industrial zones.
But maybe enough to provide whatever it is that we need. I mean, I don't know what the need assessment is, which I would think is the baseline. How much do we need and how much do we supply?
Well, if, if the town wants to be a hundred percent renewable, we need a lot.
I don't know what a lot is, though.
Well, it's, it's definitely not just to handle peak.
No, I think it would be interesting for us to actually hear from PSEAT.
Wow.
Right, and, and say, here's how we got to this point to wanna.
Yeah, I mean, we had a few of their reps come and talk to us. And they were talking about like cost benefit analysis, but then they were saying, well, it's cheaper to use natural gas. But is that our objective? You know, there's that, the other side of this story is that you don't wanna replace one fossil fuel for another.
Right.
You're trying to get to a renewable future, where the energy is coming from the sun.
And the wind.
And the wind, the tides.
National Grid is looking for a digester placement that could go for food waste.
Who is?
And then generate natural gas, um, National Grid.
Here in the town?
Here, well, they were looking in Riverhead or somewhere on the east end, so, I mean, that's an interesting thing too. Departure as well, we digress.
I agree, I can give you kind of a hashed out scope, and I welcome that input on that scope, so, um, we can keep moving forward and keep staying within our, at least get as much work as we can done during our moratorium period, so we can show some real progress.
But you're gonna need an extension, for sure.
The long short of it is, you know, the, the P S E G, they're looking for a partnership with a municipality, right? So, we're, if we're saying we're a willing partner, but you have to bring something to the game.
Yeah.
You say, well, we, they could say, we have a short extension cord, so this makes sense for us, and we say, well, you may need a longer extension cord.
Yeah.
Right, except that a longer further, you know, we're still kinda old school in the sense of like, the further away, the more loss you have. So, how do you, you know, make that, bridge that gap?
And have somebody be researching new technology, because you read about new technology often, and.
Well, like I had said, I mean, this is a little totally left field, but, I mean, here you have in one part of the town, a giant hole that someone wants to fill in, like, why don't we put one of these gravity batteries or some kinda water thing over there? Mechanical, not chemical.
Sandland and Noyak.
You know, or like you do, you have these sand mines, maybe there's some gravity situation, I don't know, I'm not the engineer here. But, I mean, I would love to not have chemical anything.
Yeah.
We could get away with it, but what is that?
What does it mean, yeah?
And Department of Energy is also a partner in all this, the, uh, they're looking at all of these things.
And the relationship between Southampton or the east end and, uh, P S E G and LIPA is changing based on Fred Thiel's proposals, so that's in the mix, I would think you can't ignore that.
Well, it's a public utility at some point, right? It'll go back to being a public utility with more accountability, which is great for all of us ratepayers in the zone K who, you know, are paying at least double the price of everyone else.
Yep, exactly.
And probably we paid for Shoreham like ten times over.
Yeah.
Well, in, in the meantime, the town board is rolling out the C C A program, which will, should help to address some of.
Yeah, the C C A, we're gonna have a workshop on that in November.
That's great.
Lynn is going to give it, give us that for.
I mean, we'll be the first town to do that.
I mean, we've been a leader so far in all the renewable efforts, and being a climate smart community means that we're trying to figure out ways to keep the power on, even in the threat of a coastal event that.
Right, it's inevitable.
It's inevitable, so.
Can you just make sure to include in the scope that the consultant proposes, uh, strategies for reducing consumption, including marketing to the public, you know?
Well, that was the idea behind like peak power and those things, trying to get people to shave that peak down. And the cost avoidance of, of, you know, not having all that new infrastructure to bring peak or plant fossil fuels this way. That was the other side of this, like wanting batteries and renewable energy, so we don't have, again, the ratepayers on the hook for millions and millions of dollars of infrastructure to bring fossil fuels, which we don't even want.
Yeah.
So, it's a bear, but it's definitely interesting, and we're on the forefront of something good.
But it's in a transition stage, and people are always uncomfortable in a transition stage.
I think it's the fear of the unknown, but the good news is the board, that you were concerned, you, the town board took a pause, and everybody is looking very carefully at this.
Good.
At every level of government, so that.
Good.
We all can feel better about whatever the outcome is, and, and it's not, oh, it's just the same exact thing. Obviously, no one wants anything that's not going to be the best.
One other thing to ask, because it's relevant. Um, the legislation for, uh, marijuana, which the town board passed, we'd like to weigh in on, you know, any kind of amendments or reviewing of it, because we're beginning to get applications now. And I don't know, for example, I know Kathleen spoke to us, and the state has a pretty hard lock on what you can do and what you can't do. And that's unfortunate, because we assume that municipal rule would, uh, override state mandates, because it's our community. So, I don't know, can, if you can talk about that, just a little bit about where we are and how we can, as a planning board, participate in, uh, a referral? Is the town board gonna look at it again or not?
The town, I, I can say one, I can say this, um, the town board will look at the special exception standards, because we will have to amend them, um, to be compliant with the changes that the state has made. The state put out conditional regs, they had a public comment period, and then they put out new regs. Again, a public comment period, that public comment period has ended, but we're waiting for the final regs to come. Um, and there were s- not particularly substantive changes, um, in that they changed community facility to youth. Uh, instead of calling it a community facility, they called it a youth, um, a government sponsored youth facility or something like that. So, we do have to go back to the town board to make those changes consistent with the state regs. So, if at that time there are other changes that you might wanna see, we could also make those to the extent that they are not preempted by the state legislation.
And how do we handle a current application, though, if that's still in flux?
Well, I wouldn't say it's in flux, I mean.
I mean, it's still being amended, so.
Well, what you have on the, on the books right now is what you should abide by. Um, and the change in the definition is more form over substance, I would, would be my answer to that.
Yeah.
Um, in terms of what the state has changed and what we have to fix. But for the most part, you could, I think you'd still be guided by those, um, but it will give you an opportunity at that time if you wanna suggest other changes, uh, again, that aren't preempted, you could do so at that time.
Yeah, we're always sort of in the box of time, place, and manner.
Time, place, and manner is basically, you know.
You're in that box, so the state said, we're gonna tell you where you can, you know, your setbacks and things like that, but you can still say time, manner.
But to the extent that you're not making it unreasonably impractical for people to comply and have a successful business.
Right, you can't be like, you can only operate from midnight to one A M.
Yeah, you know, you make the setbacks so difficult that there's no comply, you know, there's maybe two complying parcels of the entire town, you know, to, to, to take it to its ultimate conclusion, you know, that's what you have to avoid. And because, you know, this is the, you know, legalization of these dispensaries, and so, when they come to you, they're coming to you as a permitted use.
And so the changes, uh, or the amendments that, because of the public hearings, I mean, I wasn't even aware of that, but state put this out in the public comment, um, will we know about those in, in time to review them and educate ourselves?
Review the state, uh, regs?
Yeah.
I, I can give you the state regs, it's, it's very large, it's the entire, it's about three hundred pages, um, but.
That's how I'm reading it.
The ones that are specific to municipal rule, I could probably, um.
Are they incorporated into our legislation?
Yes, we had to mimic them for the most part.
That's what you told us.
Yeah.
But there'll be some change in those, you're saying, some amendments?
A little bit, more, more form over substance. Defin- the name, how they're identifying something versus the definition attached to it.
Okay, like in ours, I think we said you can have a drive through.
Correct.
And the state may come out with final regulations that say you can, and then we would have to change ours. Or they may have agreed with us, 'cause we said.
So, we did get a response, so they, they did do responses to, uh, we did write letter, a letter on behalf of the town board that said we did not want to have a drive through, and there is almost like a secret document, like the, the E I S. Yeah, there's a response to comments, and I found our comment in there, they don't, they don't meme us, but I found the comment. And the response is, um, applicants should comply with local regulations as it relates to drive throughs, so they're acknowledging.
That's an interesting document.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm sure, yeah.
It's not, it's all, I have to say, it's all online, the M R T A website, um, I can certainly forward everybody the link. Um, it has all the proposed comments, it has the responses to comments.
Okay, good.
So, if you want, if you had time and you wanted to peruse that, you can.
Yeah, so, but for the most part, right now, when you get an application, like, like Kathleen said, it's just based on the regs we have today until they've changed.
Right.
Yeah, we, we had our first today.
I, I think the biggest difficulty or hurdle you'll probably face with public comments is just articulating that it is now a permitted use.
Right, well, the town opted in, so. Instead of not opting in, but.
It's already being sold on the reservation.
Well, that's gonna take a, a little bit of time for people to get used to the fact that it is permitted use.
Mm-hmm, yes, we bet.
Janice, this is something small, but worth mentioning, if you're looking at code changes, the, the grade change for pyramid, um, law issue. And I don't know if you could explain how that's not included right now, or if it is in some way touched on. Uh, I'm seeing, especially in my neighborhood, more than just one home where there is a grade, um, a natural grade, and then the person gets that administrative site plan review and changes the grade, so that their house could be taller.
They don't get an administrative site plan review, they just come for a building permit, and, and that is, uh, you know, something we've been trying to work through with the town engineer and also the chief are both our floodplain managers. So, it affects flooding. It would be great if everyone changed their grade and we all went up. But we're all not going up, so some people going up and some people staying down is the problem. So, uh, in as much as that is happening, I get a lot of complaints all the time about that, where people are saying, you know, they dug out a basement, so then they could have ten foot high, you know, they brought the whole grade up. So, we do have a little code committee, code enforcement, we have like a quarterly code meeting with like the town engineer and myself and fire marshal and chief building inspector, and we all kinda meet about these, and that one's on our radar about how to, and in our next meeting coming up, we'll be talking about it, so, to be continued, but yeah, it is an issue, I agree.
So, we're gonna have regular touch base with Janice now on different things that we're seeing as we're seeing applications or in our neighborhoods and things like that?
Yeah, I mean, we're essentially looking at code and, um, and some issues, whatever Janice can help us with, you know?
Seeing if we have the tools to do our job.
I know, it's so quiet, I'm just like, listening. Well, I mean, it's sort of like, you can have that, you know, all the policy and all that, but in the end, if it's not being implemented here, what's?
I have pages, Janice, from the, over the years, you know that.
So, it's, it's not just the ideal, it's the application.
Is there any appetite for revising A P O D so that it's a larger percentage that we can preserve in the A P O D?
Well, I think in the A P O D, just generally, that is a massive problem, like, because of like, it jumps so, so differently, like, when you get to a certain size parcel. You can clear so much more.
Yeah.
And that doesn't really do much for habitat, you know what I mean? Like, it's a little weak, wonky.
I think it does, because it, the bigger parcels keep more habitat open.
That's, wait a minute, what am I thinking? That the bigger parcel clears more, the bigger parcel clears less more? That's it, and, but they wanna be able to clear more, 'cause they're like, I have this bigger parcel, it's not there.
And then you get a revenge plan.
So, that's.
Cause they do it anyway.
Well, most of them.
But I remember when it was first proposed by one of the county council people, three years ago.
And like I said, Marty did an entire analysis, we have all that work done, he really spent a lot of time on it.
And what does Marty think? Does he?
Well, he thinks there's some definite areas that we can, it's not really A P O D, though, it's more like just habitat open space, woodland protection, more so than, you know, groundwater, although it has that added benefit.
Yeah.
Uh, it's just like, these are our woodland habitats that we need to look at and protect and create these wildlife corridors and allow for succession and old growth things to mature and sort of be stewards of that, um, how do you do that? In a way that still gives somebody a reasonable use of their property, I know.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of the revenge plans we're seeing are from, uh, developments where we saved a lot of, uh, unbuilt land and built, allowed smaller lots. And then the, the builders are not building houses that fit on the lots, they're building houses that people want, which are much bigger. And so they, so when they're, when they're putting in the infrastructure, they're physically not able to not cut everything down.
Well, that's another thing that I uncovered, is that in the A R B review of things, substantial is seventy-five hundred square feet or more. I was like, we should maybe make that like four thousand square feet, like, that's a threshold in Seagra, that's a better threshold. Because at four thousand square feet, if you gotta, it's one thing, but if you're trying to jam in seventy-five hundred square feet, maybe that, from a twelve hundred square foot little house that was once there, maybe that's.
Which is the fact.
The review issue that we're missing out on.
Yeah.
You know, and so, it could just be the way that we've drawn lines
Yes.
that are arbitrary and need to go back and revisit them.
Or they're based on how it used to be, I mean, because the average house now is like six thousand square feet. So, they put it in, in subdivision, I mean, there was one right in Bridgehampton, and every lot is over cleared, revenge.
The one on the turnpike.
The contractors say, well, we can't maneuver, we can't put in a septic, we can't do this, because the trees are in the way, so everything gets cut down.
Well, that's like, when you review it, then it really has to be, show me the line around the, ten feet around the house that you need. You know, you can't show a plan with those vegetation and then expect to build a house, you gotta go ten feet around that house.
So, in a site plan, we don't ask for a how, where the house is going to be, I always think it's a mistake. I wanted, I would like to know where the house is.
Well, not with our subdivision, but what Dennis mentioned, yeah, that you could do, and this is one of my notes, is hay bales instead, installed for everybody who's in A P O D. You don't get a building permit until you see your hay bales up, and if they're removed, then you get a stop.
Clearing line, you know, line of clearing.
Yeah. You know, being in this role now and seeing like the amount put on building inspectors and the amount of enforcement is, it's, it's
A lot.
Big problem, so, like, the more we can do upfront to ensure compliance, the better.
Give us the tools, yeah.
We also have the tools of, of the setbacks we could put on these lots, maybe we should have bigger setbacks.
Or in like the place of the subdivision, like Vineyard Vines, make them put a bigger open space and then don't have clearing restrictions. Because you want the contiguous open space.
And we got.
What is it, what is it achieving having?
Well, we did get a lot of open space in that subdivision.
Well, you did, but you could have gone for more, there's a provision in your code for subdivisions, is you can say, if you, you saw, you save seventy-five percent, you can clear all of your lots that you have, and maybe that's a tool that you should use more often.
Yeah, we, we, you know, you've found that like these conservation easements in people's backyard, like, they always.
File like them.
You know, you know, so like, you sort of have to start saying, these are not really on the table. These are not really gonna work, when someone shows you a little perimeter buffer, it's, you know, a gesture, but it's not habitat. It's not enough to really count, you know, so, if you make a decision about that.
Provision in the code, that's interesting.
Yeah.
You can do that.
You did that with Lewis Road, believe it or not, because that was, there was no way you were gonna be able to.
On those ten thousand square foot lots, yeah. So, maybe anything less than four, um, acre, you have to get more open space and you can provide it.
It's a, it's a solution.
Well, it's definitely like, well, this calls for this tool, let me take it out of my toolbox, and this calls for that, you know, and, and you have them at your disposal.
Though, you know, so that's a consideration too, is to maybe put something that layers over about like some matured, like, street. about like some mature, like, street trees or something like that, because if you have this chunk of woodland and then like everything else is just bare.
Yeah, no, and we're not suggesting, you have to be in the context.
Well, people will, people will landscape that property.
People will keep or replant to, to, to their own liking.
Yeah.
If you're in a woodland setting, then that's one way. If you're in a farmland situation, that's another way.
Right.
Yeah.
way, so you really are, it's always in the, you have to always kind of be like, where am I, and what's the context and what's the goals here?
Context. Yeah.
Because they're not always the same across the board.
Right.
So.
This is good.
So, I just wanna add that I'm gonna, on my own time, do research on parking lot design.
Thank you.
Because I think that our parking lots are stuck in the past. And I take pictures of, of parking lots wherever I go, and I just see how they're planted, how they're arranged. And they're, they're, it's, they're smarter than what we have, so
Cool.
I'm gonna just do, do a report. Not tomorrow, till after the film festival, let's wait till after the film, but I really, because we're looking at parking lots all the time. And they're all below grade, or they're not thoughtful, they're not creative. We have to remind people to plant a tree every twenty spaces for shade, and a lot of the, uh, the green direction is to make your parking lots shady so that you don't have the heat that's coming up from the caddem.
Yeah.
And as, as we get warmer.
Remember, it was so revolutionary to put that walkway at Stop and Shop, like, that was such a big deal.
Oh, well, that's great, yeah.
But I mean, that was twenty years ago, and that was a lot.
I know. I know, Janice.
We did anything since, and we gotta like write a law about it.
Right, right.
I mean.
Now, go figure.
But I think you're right, you know, the more green infrastructure, the more you can make it feel
And design, how you design it, yeah.
like wooded or cute.
And we're not taking into consideration these jagunda vehicles, they're landscaping vehicles
West Hampton did a great job with their.
that have both a horse trailer on the back, the size of a horse trailer, and a truck in the front. I mean, it's an enormous space, so a conventional parking space does not accommodate it. So, we need to make sure that we leave enough in a parking area for those overs- oversized vehicles and oversized lot.
Hmm, yeah.
I mean, it's just sort of staying current with how life is now, you know?
Sure, I mean, you always have a little pamphlet or booklet done on best practices for parking lots.
Particularly out here.
And just add it to your toolbox. Yeah, no, I'm saying you can have, well, your research, we can
Well, this is for us, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Right.
hire some design professional to make that look nice and hand it out at planning.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
You know, say you're designing a parking lot, here's what the plan board wants to see.
Yeah. We should do a course like that for the Suffolk County Planning Commission, somebody should do a course on parking lots. Be very popular.
Mm-hmm.
The A P A probably has something.
Yes.
Right?
I'm sure they do.
Sure. The A P A has a lot of courses too, if you're still looking for more, there's a lot.
Great, great. Well, we could just go on with.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So much, thank you, Claire.
Before you go, I just wanna mention, um, I have read the County Road Thirty-nine R F P, the corridor study that the county issued for engineering assistance, creative ideas, uh, and I also read the addendum to it. I think the town is going to be underrepresented based on their meeting schedule that they put out for the, you know, proposers. Um, in terms of the number of meetings the town's gonna be invited to attend. And in the addendum, somebody obviously asked about future traffic, you know, projections. Uh, and there, they talk about they can reach out to the, and I believe, they mean they can, reach out to the town of Southampton Planning Department for that kind of assistance.
Sure.
My point being, I think that, um, somewhere, we need to have somebody be a point person working with the county and the town, you know, or a county and the state, all along this process. And, um, you know, obviously, in terms of future growth projections or whatever it may be, but also in terms of some of their early meetings and plans and things like that. You know, with state and county has set number of meetings, and then we're down with town, village, other stakeholders. Well, since everything that's gonna be studied, and they're studying up, they're doing traffic counts on Lilac Road, they're doing traffic counts on Lumber Lane, they're gonna be doing traffic counts and projections all over the town of Southampton, east of the canal. I think we need to be very involved in that process.
Okay, sure. Are we talking to the women?
I'll nominate Tom Neely.
I second that.
You know, I'll be there, you know?
Yeah.
Um, and they should also, you know, be aware of some of, you know, the seeds project that's course is elongated, but the work that went into that,
Absolutely.
the County Road Thirty-nine roundabouts, you know?
No doubt about it. I know, Claire.
Dust some of that off. I know you guys are so busy.
No, we'll, we'll reach out, we'll, we'll try to make sure we have.
You know, and I will, I will try to sit in or something if I can help. But I really think we have to make sure we're in the middle of this from, you know, from right now to, you know, and it's gonna be a long-term project, you know, there, if you look at the scope of work, there's a lot involved. Um, but I think we need to make sure we're, we're in the middle of this and that it, you know, it's not, we did the big plan in two thousand and six to two thousand and nine for Thirty-nine.
County Road Thirty-nine study.
Right, but, you know, and those shelved, those plans were shelved, you know?
Well, it's. Shelved.
We have to make sure, whatever it may be on Thirty-nine or Montauk Highway.
We do have some good valuable input to give them, so.
And I don't know if they're gonna ask us for it, so.
Okay.
We may need to dust it off and say, remember this, remember that, you know?
Sure.
So, anyway, just like the, and I'd be glad to talk to you more about that if you want.
Thank you. That'll be good. Okay, very good.
Aren't you glad you came?
Thanks, Janice.
Thank you.
See you tomorrow.
Okay, Claire, uh, we have to now, we have a little bit of time.
Yeah, we have enough time, it's not, they're not difficult, um.
Uh, twelve? One fifty-eight Brookhaven Avenue?
Yeah, so this is a site disturbance, but, but.
Um, it's pretty straightforward, it's, um, it's three thousand square feet every vegetation. It's a small lot, um, it's only fifteen thousand square feet. And, uh, the plan looks good. So, this is the plan to revegetate. From the edges, which are adjacent to other people's, um, natural vegetation, so it should work, it should look pretty good.
How much were they over cleared?
They're over cleared, uh, to ninety-four percent of the property, and they're entitled to thir- seventy-five percent uh, cle- um, clearing in total, and that would be three thousand square feet in revegetation.
I see. And Marty saw the plan, uh, Claire?
No, Marty does not review the plan, I, I do, because we have a list of plans he's appropriated for the, for that area.
Yeah.
Uh, planners, so it's, you know, it's pines and, and such. Um, so, uh, we reviewed it, actually, um, Jeff reviewed it, and this is a left over.
Okay.
So, I'm recommending.
He got really good at that.
Yeah, he got really good at it, exactly. So, I'm recommending, um, to approve these, the revegetation plan with the typical conditions that should be completed prior to the issuance of U C O, um, that they submit a final survey showing the, um, vegetation area. And this is eligible for an extension. It's only good for one year, but it's eligible for an extension, that's.
Okay, any questions? Motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by George, second by Tom, all in favor?
That and I.
Hi.
Opposed extensions, six in favor, one absent. Uh, Southampton Dog?
Yes.
We did that.
We did that, but we didn't set.
We accept the pre-submission conference.
Right.
This is really cute, you guys have seen this.
Oh, this is different, this is the other, not the other dog.
This is not the old.
This is another dog.
This is the other dog.
There's a little. Wait, there are a whole bunch here.
Day, this is a day, daycare center.
Yeah.
It's a daycare center. This is so cute.
And training center.
This is, it made me happy, so.
I wanna change your face.
What's, what was the name of the other application?
Uh, one forty-four Mariner, the one for the vet?
Yeah, the vet.
Yes. So, this would be to, um, do a pre-submission, um, conference, set it for November ninth for dog kennel. In the existing Charo, it was, I'm sorry, Kankos, it was the Kankos tile building, it's hasn't been Kankos for, but.
Oh, on that corner?
Yeah.
Wow.
Yep, so I'm recommending November ninth for a pre-submission. A good, good use, you know, L I forty is only.
That's how they've been faking for a while.
Faking for a long time.
Yeah, Kankos has been, and it's new building for good, yeah.
Cool, I like this option.
Are they, they're not, they're just gonna doctor it up, right, in that building?
No, they're just going to paint the building, um, it's a brightish green right now, I think they're gonna make it more of a subtle green. Or they might do the red, so they gave a couple examples, but I thought it was a nice presentation material that we'll have for your
Yeah.
Right.
your pre-submission conference and.
And do they have, they must have outdoor space as well, right?
They're gonna have some outdoor space, yeah.
I see split rail fences.
Outdoor wood, split, split rail fences.
Yes.
Oh, oh, look at this, isn't this cute?
You can keep it if you want.
But like.
I know, the interior.